Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the December 14th, 2020 Clovis City Council meeting. Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and the social distancing guidelines issued by the federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing changes to participate in council meetings. The council chambers will be open to the public, but we will be implementing social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may enter the council chambers. The meeting will be webcast and accessed at the link shown. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in the meeting by accessing the webcast at the link shown, providing written comment at the same website, participating by phone, or coming to the city council meeting in person. We are practicing social distancing and can only accommodate a maximum of 16 people at one time. I will call the meeting to order and ask council member Monatua to lead us in the flight loop.
Please join me in saluting our flag. Ready? Begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it's court call roll, please. Councilor Ashbeck.
I am here.
Councilor Flores.
Here.
Councilor Monatua.
Here.
Councilor Whelan.
Here.
Mayor Besseger.
Here.
And we come to the presentation and proclamations portion of the meeting. Our first item is a presentation recognizing and thanking Deputy City Planner Orlando Ramirez for 30 years of service to the city.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I have the honor of recognizing tonight Orlando Ramirez for his 30 years of service here at the city of Clovis. Before I jump into my dashing presentation, I want to have John Holt play a quick video that a few staff members put together for him. So, a big thank you to Lily and her sister Carrie for putting that video together. You guys did a really good job. So, the majority of Londo's tenure here at the city of Clovis has been in planning and development services. However, he did spend about four years over in economic development for just a short period of time. So, Londo began his career, obviously 30 years ago, so in 1990. At that point in time, Clovis was about 14 square miles with a population of around 51,000. Over the years, he's transitioned up the ladder and into various positions from planning tech to planning specialist, associate planner, senior planner, and in his current position, deputy city planner. He's leaving the city of Clovis with a square mileage that's almost doubled. It's 26 square miles and a population that's around 117,000 people. Going back to when Londo first started in the early 90s or 1990, he began leaving his mark right off the bat with developers and helping them design their subdivisions because, you know, Clovis has a reputation to keep here. That work led to him becoming our site plan review in-house specialist, which further led to more professional planning growth opportunities as he began presenting before Planning Commission and City Council more complex projects. He has a strong presence in code enforcement, and that is something he will be greatly missed. I had the opportunity to talk to Brian Iraqi who's here with us tonight, and Brian shared with me that Londo put a lot into code enforcement. It wasn't just a job. It was really about trying to come to a compromise, trying to figure out how to work with the community on problems that he was presented. I believe, sorry, Brian, I'm just going to go ahead and say it, and there was even an opportunity or a time where there was a fence violation, and Brian and Londo went out on their own time to help correct the problem and repair the fence. So, it was more than just a job for him. It was a passion for him. I would be remiss if I didn't highlight some of his more noteworthy accomplishments, such as the ordinance amendment that he took before City Council early on in his career around 1995 that was allowing for household pets, such as the Vietnamese pot-bellied pigs. I don't know, did we ever get any licenses for the pigs? I'm not sure. On a more serious note, he was the vision behind the entry sign on Shaw Avenue. He conceptualized the sign, he designed it, and he also helped build it. Londo has played a part in so many projects. If I go back to 1990 through today, this is when we saw the Buchanan complex being built, we had Cottonwood Park, the police and fire headquarters, development of Clovis Avenue up to Shepherd, and now it's beyond Shepherd, the sewer treatment water reuse facility, the Miss Winkles Pet Adoption Center, Dry Creek Business Park, and of course, our new Costco. I've heard that prior to COVID, Londo would frequent Denny's quite often early in the morning with staff to either mentor them, talk through projects, or just have friendship. Now, since COVID hit, obviously, that's made it a little difficult, but I bet if anybody here wanted to have coffee one early morning, or food, really, of any sort, Londo would be up to meeting you. While I've had the opportunity to work with Londo in the same building for many years, it hasn't been but recently that I've really been able to work on projects with him. I will sincerely miss his guidance, our planning lessons, his historical knowledge as to why we did something the way we did, and his ability to pretty much work with any type of personality, and most of all, his passion to see his staff grow professionally and confidently. So, Londo, tonight, we just want to recognize you for your 30 years of service. Thank you. So, I do have a plaque here for you that memorializes all of your positions and your years of service. So, I will give this to you, but first, I believe Public Utilities wants to present you with something as well.
It goes doubly so for us out in Public Utilities. He was a rock, and he's always there, a good rock, always there, always picked up the phone, always helped us on everything we needed. And I was actually in PDS for a little while, and always good salsa, always good times, and he's...
Not the guy.
Anyway, from the Public Utilities team. Don't touch yourself.
So, again, Londo, I want to present to you this plaque that identifies all of your positions, and with that, that concludes my presentation. If you would like to say something? It's all yours. Oh, and I would also have to say that Londo's going to do one last presentation for us tonight. We couldn't let him go without speaking before the council.
Thank you all. Thank you, the council, for everything you've done for me. I got nervous. I truly appreciate this in that even when we went through the rough times of the recession in 2009, you called an emergency meeting, and I was able to keep my position here with the city. And even four years into that, there was opportunities to go elsewhere. I was offered a senior planner position with the county of Fresno, a supervising position with the city of Fresno as well, and I declined both, even though I was back to being a Tech One for those four and a half years. And the reason so is that my loyalty was to the city of Clovis. You showed loyalty to me by creating a position so I could stay working with the city of Clovis, so I wasn't going to turn my back on you folks. As I told staff, 43 years ago, I was 13 years old, and I was driving a farm labor van to Mendota during the summers while most of my friends were out playing basketball and football. I was responsible for taking care of our household, so I did that six days a week, and then at night, I would take occasional shifts working the tomato machines, 6 to 6, out in the west side by Interstate 5. By age 17, I knew what my future was going to be. I was going to be a farm labor contractor, and that was my goal, is to buy my own farm labor van and take rights to the fields and go block and chop cotton and prune and tie vines. That's what I wanted to be. It was a great goal of mine. As you know, the community of Mendota is a blighted area, and it's had a significant issue with unemployment and poverty, but it was my Hispanic Mayberry, and that's what I loved growing up in. It's very much like Clovis, but just on the minority side. So, it wasn't until the counselor brought me into his office, and he had received my call, my SAT scores, and said that I had scored in the college levels in English and math, and said, "You're not going to be a farm laborer." I said, "Yes, I am." He said, "No, I'm taking you home after school, and we're going to talk to your mom and dad when they get out of the fields, and you're going to feel what's called a Pell Grant, and you're going to go to college." And that started the ball rolling. A few years later, after City College, I found myself working on G Street. Not that G Street, I was working at Alerta Light, at the sign shop on G Street, and I was a graphic artist there, and I loved doing that as well. But then one day, my wife said, Gracey, she says, "Look, there's a planning job at the city of Clovis." I said, "Oh, city of Clovis? I'm not so sure about that." I said, "What does it entail?" She says, "All they're looking for is a graphic artist. You can do that. You're an incredible graphic artist." I said, "Sure, I'll give it a shot." I must admit, it was a little intimidating. When I applied at the Veterans Memorial, just I showed up, there were 70 applicants there, all of them with suits and briefcases, and here I am in my Alerta Light scrubs, full of ink and xylene, and I gave it my best shot. And during that time, I was going to the library every day after work from G Street, coming over here and looking at your municipal code and trying to figure out what Section 9 meant, what's housing, what's commercial, what's industrial. So, when Dwight called me in for that interview, I was ready. I said, "Ask me anything about zoning." And for someone who didn't have a clue, I guess I impressed them, and here I am. The first day was not the easiest day for me. November 16, 1990. Staff knows that there were some difficulties in my first day here throughout the whole day, even as I left this office, but that only made me stronger. I wanted to persevere, and I wanted it more for myself, and I thank you for the amazing career that I've had. I tell all our staff, "This is the most amazing place to work with the most amazing people." I tell everyone, "We have the best planners in the state," and I believe that to this day. And now, we have a new generational planners, and I encourage them to keep striving hard and work with passion. I said, "I remember, you're a salesperson here. You're selling the city of Clovis. Just do a damn good job of it." So, thank you all for everything.
I'd like to give anybody in the audience an opportunity. Anybody like to have an opportunity to say something about Londo before the council does? I knew your running partner would show up.
I'm not Mike Frandini. I know you guys probably thought I was because of mask. It's confusing. It's Brian Iraqi, 3036 Lester Avenue, Clovis. I met Londo before the city of Clovis. We were both in graphic design, as he mentioned, I was too, and I used to buy all my supplies at Allards, and he was working at Allards at the time, and he was kind of the go-to guy for pinstriping brushes and airbrush things and stuff like that. So, in 1990, when I was already working here, he comes to the counter and like, "What are you doing here?" And that was probably one of his bad moments in Clovis, like, "Why are you here?" You know, it's like, "This guy's asking me this." But anyways, he told me he got a job here, and from that point on, I mean, even from graphic design, we were kind of a parallel path. We both had our kids within a week, our first kid from a week of each other, and then I have a grandchild, and then he has a grandchild, and we weren't trying to copy each other. Just things were happening, and we were leading this path and realized that we could end each other's sentences and almost like these lost twins. But I want to congratulate you, Londo, on your career. We had a great thing here. It's going to continue to be great. There's some great planners that Londo had mentored, and things are in good hands with Renee, and I congratulate Luke and the council for making that decision. But anyways, Londo, you're going to love retirement. It's not for everybody, but I think we can both handle it.
Mike?
Good evening. Mike Cunningham from the city of Clovis. I've known Londo since I started coming to the council meetings in 2011, and then later on, after being appointed to the Planning Commission, had the opportunity to work with him, and more importantly, be a friend to Londo. Very impressed with this gentleman. He's come a long way from Mendota in both terms of mileage and stature, but doesn't forget his roots, and he's very down-to-earth. So happy for a great career, even happier that you've joined the ranks here. Of course, you'll have to be referred to as rookie, although Brian's no longer the rookie now, you are, so, but congratulations.
Thank you, Mike.
Gosh, well, I am so lucky to have had the opportunity to work alongside you, Londo, for these years that I've been here with the city. Londo has played such an integral part in my professional growth and my personal growth because he's just that kind of guy. It's kind of ingrained in his DNA. He's patient, he's kind, he's caring, and to him, the extra energy that it takes to exert, for him to exert, to ensure that staff feel important and that they're a valuable part of the team is worth it to him. Londo was not really, he was not just a manager, he was an inspiring leader. It's inspiring to witness the quality customer service that he provides to all persons without judgment of their status and influence in the city. Londo has the way of handling uncomfortable situations with irate persons where they leave feeling heard and content that a fairer solution has been recognized. It's fascinating to see Londo's mind and hand at work when translating his vision onto paper as he redraw plans and elevations for developers. Londo has a heart to care, the passion to inspire, and the willingness to empower, all of which are reflective in the kind of leadership that he has imparted onto us. So, Londo, your retirement is well-deserved, but I got to say, it's definitely a big loss to our department and the city. You are the rare kind of person that contribute towards the perception of the city as not just another government entity, but one that is exceptional. I promise you that we will try our very best to uphold these values that you have graciously imparted onto us, and although I am sad to see you go, I'm happy to know that I have gained a friend for a lifetime. Congratulations, Londo.
Yes, so, Londo, you and I came to the city of Clovis just about the same time. Yeah, it was April 1990, but I think the thing that I remember you the best for in all those years I was here was the pot-bellied pig ordinance. I remember the night at City Hall when we were going to approve it. It was brought to us by a lady, the name of Kelly Shank, and I asked then-council member Kent Hamlin if he'd make the motion so that we could call it the Ham Shank Ordinance. I don't know that they did or not, but she brought the pig in. She had notified me she was devastated. The police department, get this now, Drew, the police department were going to come and they were going to take her pig away in 10 days, and she loved that pig. That was her baby. And so, she brought the pig in, and our then-planning director was not necessarily an animal person, John Wright, and he looked at the pig, and all he said was, "Dinner." And the pig subsequently went over in the corner of John's office and peed on the floor. But you felt your pain, I remember. You're an animal person. I'll always love you for that, and we got the job done, and for good, for better or worse, the city now, mostly because of you, not me, mostly because of your hard work, and certainly not John Wright, but we got it done, and the city now has a pot-bellied pig ordinance. We thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Do we have anybody online who'd like to speak about Orlando?
No, unless Lynn wants to say something.
Okay, and we will close public comments and come to the council for comments. Lynn, I figured I'd start with you since you were on the Planning Commission for such a long time.
Oh, my gosh. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm trying to not have an echo. Thanks, Drew. Well, first of all, I would just like to say, nobody told us that you were retiring, at least I didn't know. So, it's a good thing Luke's performance review was last week because I would not have been happy about this. So, Orlando, I am thrilled for your retirement. Yeah, I started on Planning Commission '89, so you joined the city just after that. I am struck by, I don't know if it's good or not, that your career is bookended by pot-bellied pigs and darn near a chicken ordinance, Bob. Luckily, I was able to stand that up, but I'm just kidding. But you really have done a remarkable job, and I do want to echo the comments about working through difficult times. I did also want to say that you actually can't retire until you resolve the RV parking problem over near Peach and Teague, so that'll keep you here for at least another decade or so, I'm fairly sure. But thank you for what you've done for the city of Clovis. I'm sort of struck in a sad way that between you and Dwight and Brian, in a pretty short order, that's about 100 years of planning service walking out of our doors. But you will know that, like Dwight and Brian, you left Clovis a better place than you found it. You've obviously made huge impacts on folks' lives, so I'm sorry I'm not there to see you in person, and I couldn't give you a hug anyway, but Clovis is better because you served, and your legacy will continue on. So, congratulations. Enjoy retirement. I do want to say that also, the video looks like the planning department was a little frenetic. You went from eating to exercise, like, you couldn't quite figure out what you wanted to do, so you tried to do them both, which was pretty fun to see. So, Londo, congratulations. We are grateful and better for your time here. Thank you so much. Thanks, Drew.
Thank you, Lynn. Vong, I'll go to you, Vong, since you were another planning commissioner. You and Londo, I think when you listen to what people say, it is a true reflection of the person that you are. And in the time that I've known you on the Planning Commission, I was there 10 years, and the last four years here, I think it is truer than anything else. You know, all the issues that came to me as a council member that was forwarded to Luke and which you handled, you always called me back to help explain the situation, to explain the position in which you took, and even if it took a call afterwards, you always responded immediately. And I think it is people like you who work in our city that gives this city such a great reputation, and, you know, it doesn't matter what position you are in. I think your supervisors who have retired, I think, carry the same character, carry the same heart. You're a caring person, and I really knew that when, I think, it was sort of the issue with the fruit stand, the mung fruit stand, and how it may have gotten, you know, kind of dicey, and you actually offered and said, "You know, I'll get people to come out, you know, to help build it and do what we need to do if that's the case." And that, you know, was going above and beyond, you know, what was asked of you, and I thank you for that. And I also want to say that, you know, a true judge of a father is in the son, and I met your son several times when he was working in Nathan's office, and every time he represented Supervisor Maxi, he was, you know, upstanding, he was considerate, he was very polite, and he showed the characters that you instilled in him, and so, that says a lot about a father when a son, you know, reflects his father. So, thank you for that, and I guess I will use this moment to challenge all the current employees that, especially in planning, you deal with the public all the time, that hopefully we will continue to have this sort of interaction, this sort of responsiveness with everyone who comes to this department, because that's sort of the reputation that the three of you who have retired during my time on the council have left on the public. So, thank you very much. Congratulations on retirement, and really, one last thing. God bless you, because I think now you can actually do things that there's no more conflict that your heart really cares and desires about. So, take care. Bob? Thank you, Vong.
I knew I should have had Orlando's help on that chicken ordinance.
I knew I should've had Orlando's help on that Chicken Ordinance. So, I wanna say thank you, to you, Orlando. Boy, Planning and Development is an amazing group of people. And you don't just snap your fingers and all of a sudden you have the camaraderie, the customer service, the creativity to build community, not buildings, but community. And your participation in the Planning and Development Department, I think, has caused a lot of that to take place. But I'm really struck, and I didn't know this about you, Orlando, and I'm kind of embarrassed to admit this, but I'm struck by how much you invested in others. There are, it's really easy just to take care of your own busy tasks, because there's enough of them. And then to take on additional responsibility, like mentoring people and bringing them along, is a real challenge for me personally, and I think for a lot of people. And that you would get up early and make sure that you invested in them says a lot about your character, your love for the West Side. I'm so thankful that you've had those experiences, because I think that that brings an awareness that I think is necessary in all of humanity. And, you know, and I wanna thank the Planning and Development Department just overall. I mean, I know that you've played a role in that, but that there was a way for somebody like you to excel and to contribute in a really meaningful way means a lot. And so, however that happened, and I'm sure that, you know, you would say it wasn't just you, but however it happened, I'm thankful that you played a role in it. I know that you've had some tough assignments over the years, things that have been, I don't know, I wouldn't call them disappointing to you, but, you know, sometimes you see people react in a way, and it's like you just wish that they would act in a more mature way or in a more loving way to their fellow man. And that doesn't always happen in the emotion of the moment. But you have been somebody who has been able to persevere through it, to de-escalate it, it sounds like, and come out of it on the other side, not just with somebody that you've been able to pivot, but also perhaps maybe walk with a little bit to help them understand more fully what it is that you are doing and what we're trying to do here more broadly in the City of Clovis. So, you're really an amazing man, and I'm sorry that we are going to lose you, but I'm thankful for the opportunity to hear these things about you. It really has touched me. And so, thank you for living your life as a man of good character.
Thank you, Bob. Jose?
Londo, thank you for your service. Congratulations. Retirement is fun, but it might get boring, so you can start a second or a third career, take it from experience. But Clovis is a beautiful city. I'm biased, I know I am. I grew up here, and people often ask me, "What is it about Clovis that it can be such a beautiful city?" And I tell them, "We're fortunate. We're small enough, we're still nimble, but we're large enough where we can afford to hire these professionals you can't imagine." And you personify that. You know, we have, we've been blessed by having all of you, Brian, Dwight, all of those who have recently retired. And I know you guys have mentored while you were here, your 30 years, and it's evident by the tears and the cracking voices I hear among your staff that that has happened, because that doesn't happen just for anybody, that happens for someone that's loved. And to hear your story from a small town of Mendota, you know, this disadvantageous city, it's always been disadvantaged, someone recognizes you for your talents, for your abilities, and you got an opportunity, and then Dwight saw it too. And we were fortunate because someone cared about you, and then it looks like you paid it forward. So, thank you for what you've done. You're the kind of professionals that keeps us the city that we are, and I know you paid it forward, and we'll reap the benefits of your service, and we'll still be that great city that we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Londo, I started with the city in 1987, and you started in '92. And in 1993, I was promoted to corporal and ended up doing code enforcement with a very young David Wolfe. And you and I worked together very closely for quite a few years, and you were always my contact at the planning department. When I needed something or to know where I needed to find something, you were the person I reached out to. There are a lot of departments that we have in the city that are key to our success. The planning department is definitely one of them, because we are what we are today because of what you were 25 years ago, and 20 years ago. When we plan things, they have to be right when we do it, because it's hard to fix them afterwards. And I always appreciated the planning department and their close work with the police department, knowing that if they planned it better and we worked together, we were gonna have a much easier time keeping crime down. And that was, that is gonna be one of your legacies, as a crime fighter, even though you were on the planning department. So, I wanna wish you the best in your retirement. Jose, like Jose said, we're really bad at the retirement thing, so maybe we can give you some advice. Thank you for your service, Orlando. Okay, now we come to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on any matter within the council's jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to five minutes or less or 10 minutes per topic. Anyone wishing to be placed on the agenda for a specific topic should contact the city manager's office and submit correspondence at least 10 days before the desired date of appearance. Mr. Grundy?
Thank you. Good evening, Matthew Grundy, 8874 North Fuller Avenue, Fresno. I'm actually here today to thank you. In Habitat for Humanity, our mission is to put God's love into action by bringing people together to build homes, communities, and hope. I'm coming here to thank you, Mayor Besseger, members of the council staff and friends, because there's no way we could do this without you. I've served most recently as the CEO for Habitat for Humanity Greater Fresno, and affordable housing is no easy feat, as you know. Helping families realize strength, stability, and self-reliance through affordable shelter by building and buying their own homes is a noble charge. And frankly, we could not do it without each of you. And so today, I just wanted to come for two reasons. One, just to say thank you, to say thank you to each one of you, council and staff, friends in the community even, because it takes a village. I'd also like to say, because many of you know, the reason for my thanks is I'm moving on from Habitat, and I'm going to move on to serve as deputy mayor for the City of Fresno. And I can unequivocally say this, because it's not January 5 yet and I'm not in office, the City of Clovis is the absolute best city to work with in terms of housing. So I wanna tell you guys that publicly, to say thank you. It's been an absolute delight. The Clovis way of life in our context has meant you all doing whatever you can for those who are rich or poor, those who have means and no means, those who, black and white, all throughout the community, doesn't matter, just pursuing a world where everyone has a decent place to call home. And so I wanna thank each of you for your commitment. I hope that the commitment with Habitat can continue. I know that the Clovis way of life, that demonstrates excellence and outstanding service and those attributes that I mentioned earlier, only come by way of great staff. So I have to take a moment to just shout out wonderful people like Andy Hausler and Heidi Crabtree, who's not here tonight, but have been working tirelessly and have done what many may not know publicly, but have just been advocates for affordable housing in this community and done all they could to make it a reality for those most in need. But along the way, I'd like to thank many who have come to become friends of Habitat, also the staff, folks like Luke, folks like Londo, we appreciate you, man, folks like Shawna and Sean and Renee and others. And again, it's a collective. So I just wanna say thank you. My purpose here, number one, was just to say, I value you personally, honored eternally for your friendship and your commitment to the community. But with that, I bring good news. It's Christmas and gifts are coming for all of us, and I have an early gift. I'd like to introduce quickly to you as a part of the comments, the next CEO for Habitat for Humanity, who happens to not only be an outstanding man, but a man of service and a 33-year resident of the City of Clovis. And so, I want to introduce with good news our next CEO, who will come introduce himself and also share a little bit about the project that we're working on together with you right around the corner on Fourth and Sunnyside. So I'd like to introduce you to Danny Armenta. Give Danny a hand.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you so much, Matthew, and everyone in attendance. It is an honor to stand before you here tonight, because I am a person that absolutely loves my community, and that's our community here in Clovis. Like Matthew said, I do have some deeper roots here. We moved here when I was about 15 years old, moved over to Chestland and Sierra, right down the street from the Sierra Nut House, and that's where we began, attended Clovis West, and I've been a Clovis Rotarian for the last almost 10 years now, and I've really appreciated it. I've owned businesses in town and built a few homes over the years. But it's funny, because when I travel, I go out of town, or I'm talking to family or people that I'm trying to recruit to move to this city from Southern California, where I'm from, they always joke with me and say, "Are you the mayor of Clovis?" And I say, "No, I'm not. I just love my city." And this first project that I just wanted to mention is just so near and dear to my heart. We were able to turn the dirt on Thursday on another new chapter of excellence in our community that I'm just so very proud of to partner with. As a veteran of the United States Army and a small business owner and a kid that grew up in this community, and to see my friends doing their jobs and their careers to make us a better home in place, and to serve alongside nonprofits like the Clovis Rotary, it just makes me so proud that we can do more. And that's always my next warning, more, that we can do more for our community. So, this project will be two homes over on Fourth and Sunnyside, and I'm excited, because just after the holidays clear, we will be starting our search for two families that will take residence there. And it's our commitment to reach out to those that we know and serve, like Chaplain Funk and others, who can help us identify the families that would best fit in those homes, but also to be able to present that home to that family at the end of this fiscal year, end of June. So that's a project that we're working on, it'll be two homes, three bedrooms, and I'm just excited, because as I've taken this new role just a couple of weeks ago, my brain overwhelmed with information from Matthew Grundy, who is an amazing person and good brother. I'm just excited about the endless possibilities. Tonight, before I can tell you, before coming over here, I was in a board meeting with the Clovis Rotary, and they were already throwing stuff out. When can we swing the hammer on those two homes? When can we be a part of that build-out process? And when can we do more after these two homes go up? So it's just the heart of our community, family, you know, education and faith in this community has been a constant. So I just wanna thank you for giving us this time to share what we get to do, and that's a term that I will share often, that we get to serve our community. We don't have to, we choose to, and it's a privilege. And Londo, I did not know you, but I'm just so proud to hear that you have legacy in this community, and it's something that I would love to have said about me one day, that I served my community well, that I chose the opportunity, I took the opportunities that were given to me, and I did not squander them. So, sir, thank you for your leadership as well. Council, thank you.
Thank you, Danny. And Matt, before you go, I just wanted to tell the audience and those listening, we weren't sure we were gonna see you before you leave to our friends to the west, and we gave Matt a proclamation at the groundbreaking of the houses last week, and he was the recipient, the very first recipient of the City of Clovis Challenge Coin. So thank you so much for everything that you've done for us and Habitat has done for us, and we look forward to continuing this amazing relationship that we have. Thank you. Okay. We're still in public comments. Does anybody inside the chambers wish to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
Yes. First, we have Lauren Butler.
Yes, Mrs. Butler?
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for speaking with you this evening. I know this is a monumentally stressful time in our community, a busy agenda, so I will be brief. I was really disheartened to hear our mayor speak at this weekend's Patriot Parade, where he made the following statement. "These people smile, their hands in friendship, and need to unite the nation. Will you join us? Remember, they were doing everything they could to tear down our nation for the last four years, but do not trust them." That's a direct quote pulled from the Fresno Beebe front page this morning. "Mr. Mayor, this kind of lineage actively pits Clovis residents against each other, and this concerns me greatly. In the Clovis that I was raised in, in the Clovis where I went to school, we were taught to love thy neighbor, particularly in Christmas time and in the holiday season. That is supposed to be the Clovis way of life, where neighbors take care of each other and our community, and that's what makes our community great. Publicly and broadly encouraging rest, openly mistrust one another during a global pandemic, where we all need to together collectively to solve this crisis, and then to openly denigrate election results, thereby casting doubt on democracy itself. It's antithetical to public service. Just today, Clovis community reported 300,000 patients are positive in patients currently receiving treatment, and another 381 healthcare workers are in isolation from exposure. And today, we rolled over 300,000 lives lost to COVID-19. Respectfully, if you're uninterested in promoting public health and unity to get us out of this crisis quickly and safely with the few numbers hospitalized this Christmas, I hope the rest of the council will keep these figures in mind in their decision-making going forward. I understand you have a conversation about the COVID response later in this meeting. I think we deserve a leadership body where all of our voices are treated with respect. We deserve a leadership body that models the working together across the aisle to solve community-wide challenges like COVID-19, and we deserve a leadership body that promotes trust in our sacred democratic institutions. So I challenge you to please do better when you speak publicly and when you represent the City of Clovis. We're all counting on you, sir. Thank you all so much."
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Anybody else online?
Yes. Next, we have Patrick Kelly. Patrick, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Patrick Kelly. Thank you for the opportunity to make a public comment this evening. I live at 1145 Paul Avenue in Clovis. Actually, I've lived here for 28 years. And in all that time, I've never previously spoken on any matter before the city council. But as a professor of biological sciences at California State University Stanislas, I felt obliged to speak tonight. And I'm gonna, I want to speak briefly, and I'm gonna keep it brief, on two items. The first is, they're both actually related to the comments by the previous speaker. I want to address the recent comments by Mayor Besseger, and I also want to talk briefly about COVID infection reduction measures in the city. Okay? Excuse me. In all the time that I've lived in Clovis, a very satisfying time in this very diverse city, increasingly diverse city, I've been very, I've been very satisfied... I've been very, I've been very satisfied with the approach to government by a whole succession of mayors. That is until this past Saturday, when Mayor Besseger spoke at a rally in our city. It looked like he was representing the city, he was there as mayor of Clovis. I found the mayor's comments to be divisive. I feel that they do not reflect well on the office he holds or on the city as a whole. That's all I want to say about this. The previous speaker addressed this in more detail. But the second issue is a really pressing one that the previous speaker also talked about. And that's to do with COVID infection rates in our community, in the entire valley, in the United States for that matter. Last week, I became aware of so-called protest dining by some establishments in Old Town Clovis. This dismayed me greatly because dining out in a pandemic denies the scientific evidence on the risk of infection, the clear scientific evidence, a risk that is steadily increasing in the San Miquin Valley. We see the statistics every night on the TV, and they are so alarming. Dining out, though, is also selfish. Every additional person that contracts COVID places additional stress on an already overly stressed public health system. As I understand it, we're down to 0% capacity in our ICUs? Come on, what the heck is going on around here? On Saturday, on Saturday evening, I decided to see for myself. And by going for a walk around and drive around in Old Town Clovis, needless to say, I'm quarantined at home here, like so many people. But I decided to go and check it out for myself. And sure enough, a number of establishments that I know well and also frequent under normal circumstances were open for indoor dining. Simply put, this is lunacy. Lunacy. We need to stop playing Russian roulette with not only our own lives, but also the lives of our loved ones and the lives of our healthcare workers and first responders. Now, I said earlier that this dismayed me because dining out in a pandemic denies the scientific evidence. I'm going to forward to the council a recent publication of a study that was published in the Marbidity and Mortality Weekly Report, which states, "Findings from a case-control investigation of symptomatic outpatients from 11 U.S. healthcare facilities found that close contact with persons with known COVID-19 or going to locations that offer onsite eating and drinking options were associated with COVID-19 positivity." I'm still quoting here. "Adults with positive SARS-CoV-2 test results were approximately twice as likely to have reported dining at a restaurant than were those with negative test results." So clearly, the science shows that dining, dining out greatly increases our risk of COVID infection. I feel that the city and law enforcement in general is not taking this pandemic seriously. And it is a terrible indictment on our local governments in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have anybody else online?
Yes, next we have David Rau. David, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much. This is David Rau. I'm a resident of Clovis. I've been a resident since 1990. I want to thank the council for the opportunity to address them. First, I'm going to say that I echo the comments by Lauren Butler and by Professor Kelly. I too wish to address the appearance, and more particularly, the comments by Mayor Besseger at the so-called Patriot Parade on Saturday. I'll begin by saying that I am a Democrat and that I voted for President-elect Joe Biden. And I watched with some concern the 50 or 60 lawsuits that have been filed across the country in the last weeks attempting to overturn the election. Mixed feelings as I watched that. And I say mixed because, as I say, I'm a Democrat and I support President-elect Biden. On the other hand, I'm an attorney, and I very strongly support the rule of law. And I believe very deeply that those who feel they have been wronged should have the right to seek redress in a court. We're a nation of laws. We should have access to the courts. And so, you know, I watched that play out with some mixed feelings. I note that in those 50 or 60 lawsuits, including the petition filed with the United States Supreme Court, on every occasion when the plaintiffs were asked to produce any evidence of wrongdoing, of fraud, of trickery, of rigging, in every single case, the answer was, "Sorry, Your Honor, we have nothing." And so all of those lawsuits were dismissed, and I was pleased to see that. But that's not really what I'm here to talk about. What concerned me was Mayor Besseger's comments. As the mayor of Fresno, I mean, the mayor of Clovis, he stood in front of this crowd and encouraged them to reject the rule of law, to reject collegiality, to withhold cooperation in governance from those with whom his views differ. I think that's shameful. I think that is divisive. It seems to me that if Mayor Besseger sees himself as an advocate for a particular point of view, then he should resign from his position as the mayor of Clovis, and he should associate with some advocacy group. If he wants to be the mayor of Clovis, then he should try and adopt rhetoric and policy that represents all the citizens of Clovis. He's entrusted with the governance of all citizens of Clovis, and yet he's told us in advance that he's not willing to do that, that he's unwilling to work with, to trust, the thousands of citizens of Clovis who don't share his views. I think that's shameful. I think that's terrible. I think that's a repudiation of his oath of office. I think he should seriously consider, if that's the position he wants to take, he should resign. I think at the very least, he should be censured by the council. And I think it's important that the council should publicly disavow these partisan comments. I think they bring shame to the City of Clovis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rau. Before we go further, I just want to say, I was quoted in the Fresno Bee, and all they did was quote one comment that I made at the end. I talked about the divisiveness that we've experienced over the last four years and that we've seen people burn cities, attack police, burn police cars, burn government buildings. And if these people, not the good citizens of the community, if these people who did these things come forth, extend their hand and smile at us and want us to unite with them, I have no values that match their values. And I cannot unite with people who do things like that. But that being said, other good people, we can disagree on just a ton of things. So I just wanted to get that out there before we get too much further down the line. Do we have anybody else online?
No.
Okay, I will, Mr. Clerk, we had some correspondence, correct?
For the record, you have a package in front of you called City of Clovis Public Comment, December 14, 2020, in that you have 12 emails from residents regarding the event that took place on Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'll close public comments. And regarding ordinances and resolutions with respect to the approval of resolutions and ordinances, the reading of the title shall be deemed a motion to waive a reading of the complete resolution or ordinance. And unless there is a request by a council member that the resolution or ordinance can be read in full, further reading of the resolution or ordinance shall be deemed waived by the unanimous consent of the council. Now we come to the consent calendar. These are items considered, items considered routine in nature are to be placed on the consent calendar. They will all be considered and voted upon in one vote as one item unless the council member requests individual consideration. A council member's vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Motions in favor of the adoption of the consent calendar are deemed to include a motion to waive the reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For adoption of ordinances, only those that have received a unanimous vote upon introduction are considered consent items. Does any member of the council wish to have an item polled from the consent calendar? Seeing none, Lynn?
I was going to make a motion when you were ready.
Let me go to the public. Does any member of the public wish to have an item on the consent calendar polled? Any member of the public in the chambers? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
No.
Mr. Clerk, did we receive any correspondence?
We did not.
Okay, I'll close public comments and come to Lynn for the motion.
My job. I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We need to do a roll.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, since Lynn's not here, we'll go ahead and do a roll, call, vote. Councilmember Ashbeck?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Moana Tua?
Aye.
Councilmember Waylon?
Aye.
Mayor Besseger?
Aye.
Thank you.
Public hearings. A public hearing is an open consideration within a regular or special meeting of the City Council for which special notice has been given and may be required. When a public hearing is continued, notice of the adjourned item is required as per Government Code 54955.1. Item 8, consider various items associated with Clovis Landmark Square, located on the north side of Third Street at Veterans Memorial Parkway. A, consider approval of a bid for CIP 15-03 Landmark Square and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. B, consider approval of an award of a construction management services contract for CIP 15-03 and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. Thad?
Mr. Mayor? The report said there was no conflict, but traditionally, I've been abstaining from voting on items that deal with this location because of the proximity to a property that I do have financial interest in. And therefore, I will recuse myself from voting on this item.
Thank you, Jose. Item C and D are receiving files. One is an update for the County Library Project, and the other is an update on project fundraising efforts. Thad Avery is our presenter. Thad?
Good evening, Mayor Besseger and City Council. My name's Thad Avery. I'm the Community Investment Program Manager for the City of Clovis. Tonight, I'll be presenting to the council for the first two items of the four associated with the Clovis Landmark Square. The first item is to consider the approval to award a construction contract to the lowest bidder, AMG and Associates, for the Landmark Square, including the senior center and the transit station building in the amount of $16,650,300. And for the City Council to authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. The second item is to consider approval to award a construction management contract to Kitchell CEM, Inc., for Landmark Square in the amount not to exceed $400,000. And for the City Council to authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. For the third item, City Planner Dave Merchant will update council on the Fresno Library Project associated with the landmark site and also present the fiscal breakdown of the Landmark Square Project. The final item will be an update on the Landmark Square fundraising efforts by the General Services Director Shawna Halterman. When the four items have been presented, I will summarize the staff recommendation for the two action items. The Landmark Square Project is located on a city property north of Third Street at the intersection of Veterans Parkway east of the Clovis Old Town Trail. The project includes construction of a new senior activity center building, a transit station building, and all the utilities and surface improvements onsite and on-site related to the Landmark Square Project. The project was advertised in October of this year with a bid opening on November 13, 2020. We received four timely bids. The low bidder is AMG and Associates at $16,650,300. The estimate provided by the architect for council in December of 2019 was $18,770,000. After the bid opening, staff reviewed the bid documents and noted that the low bidder had discrepancies between the words and figures of the bid items and total base bid. The city made a clarification to the low bidder, AMG's bid amount, based on instructions of what governs in the bid proposal. This was explained to AMG, and they are willing to move forward with the city's clarification of their bid. Staff then received a bid protest from the fourth bidder, Seals Construction, who protested that the two low bidders did not submit, did not list subcontractors for the three portions of work. Both bidders named in the protest explained that the work in question was either covered by another portion of work or the subcontract amount was under one-half of 1% of the total contract amount, at which time the prime contractor is not required to list the subcontractor on the bid proposal. The city's response letter to AMG that includes Seals' bid protest letter is attachment three to the council report. In the letter, the city also reminds the contractor they are required to pay prevailing wage. A subsequent letter from Construction Industry Force Account Council that states some of the same information included in the original bid protest was received today, and that letter has been given to council. Due to the complexity of the Landmark Square Project and the amount of man-hours required to properly administer the construction contract, city staff has decided to contract with a professional construction manager to help oversee the construction of the project. In July of this year, staff requested proposals for a construction management firm. Through the review process, a proposal received, Kitchell CEM, Inc., was selected by staff to provide construction management services for Landmark Square. I will now hand it over to Dave Merchant to continue presentation.
Thank you, Thad, mayor, members of the council. During your consideration this evening of the construction contract for the project, we want to take the opportunity to talk a little bit about a couple of related items, including an update on the activities regarding the Fresno County Library, as well as an overall budget update and a little bit of a discussion about financing of the improvements that are under consideration. So as you know, the north end of the Landmark Square site has been designed to accommodate the future construction of the Fresno County Library Clovis branch. That branch will replace the existing library that's located just next door here to the council chambers. And the site work that's included in the AMG contract will also accommodate the layout and utilities for the library when it's constructed eventually by the county. Today, the county is in the process of going through their preliminary design phase. It'll take a few months to get past that preliminary design phase and into the process of construction documents and getting their project ready to bid. The most likely scenario for the county at this point is that they will proceed with a construction contract for the library after the city completes its portion of the Landmark Square Project. And that would really be intended for two reasons. First, it would allow them to get through their process to make their plans bid-ready. And it would have the secondary benefit of avoiding construction conflicts that would otherwise be likely if both the city's contractor and the county's contractor were both operating on the same site under the responsibility of different owners. The county, at this point, is reviewing a cooperative agreement that staff prepared and sent over for their review a few weeks ago. And we expect a couple of comments and red lines to come back within, probably by the end of December. And once that agreement is cooked and a solid draft is available, has been reviewed by both the city and county staff, we'll bring that forward to the council for your consideration. That'll occur at least after the first of the year, we hope, at least during the first quarter of next year. A portion of the property that will become the new county library was acquired by the city through an exchange agreement with the Benedetto Properties. That's the property located immediately to the north of what is now Landmark Square. The city has been working with the Benedetto family and their legal counsel to clear the site of the remaining materials that the Benedetto had acquired over the years and to make the site ready to remove the existing fence, relocate a gate, so that we could prepare the site for our contractor to come in and do the earthwork during the first phase of construction. So we're working actively with the owner and the representative. So we're working actively with the owner and the representatives to get that done. Slide? In terms of the budget for the project, this is an excerpt from your agenda package, page 70, and maybe a little hard to read based on the scale. As Thad mentioned, about a year ago, it was actually December 16th of last year, so just a year and a couple days ago, we were in front of the council with a site plan review application and presented a project budget that was all-in, all things considered, about $21.9 million. So if you compare that to the current cost based on the construction contract and really the same factors that we presented last year, we're a little more than $2 million under where we thought we'd be, which we're pretty pleased about. As we described last year, and I know it's been a whole year, so you probably don't remember the details, but we've had a number of cost estimates for this project. We've had a hard time having any consistency between estimates, and when you added the uncertainty of the COVID environment and the fires that really devastated California during the last several months, we didn't really have a lot of faith in what our number would come back. We didn't know if we'd massively higher than our estimates, or lower, or on target. So we're at this point really pretty pleased to come back to you with an estimate that's not only at, but substantially below the number that we presented to you a year ago. Slide? So table 2 here is also an excerpt from page 70 of the staff report package. This is a description of the revenues and debt service that we'll be looking at, at least in a preliminary form. So the funding for the project will come from an alphabet soup of funding sources, including some general fund as well as some dedicated funding sources. The takeaway here is that once we apply the funding sources that are available on cash, we'll be looking at debt or bond in the amount of roughly $9.5 million, and when we apply annual revenues to that, that leaves us with a 20-year bond debt service of about $475,000. Again, that compares to last year's number for general fund debt service of about $540,000. So just like the capital cost, the general fund debt service for 20-year bond would be a fair bit lower than what we saw last year. And we have also included a number for a 30-year bond that would drive debt service down to a little less than $300,000 a year. This is just a demonstration that there are different alternatives that the city can consider as it looks at debt financing for the period, for the gap that we don't have cash available today. The finance department is currently looking at debt financing alternatives and including the possibility of perhaps pooling some capital projects together and looking at funding through a single issue. Finance department will be back to you after the first of the year to review those alternatives and strategies that are available to us. Until the city has bond revenue available, we will pay for construction out of pocket and we have the capacity to make that happen at this point, so we're in good shape. Slide? Fundraising opportunities will assist with total funding efforts, and Shawna Halterman will walk you through that.
Good evening. Three years ago, we formed a nonprofit organization in order to better leverage donations and to be able to apply for some grants. We've received approximately $300,000 in grants and donations. We're gonna use that for fixtures and equipment that are not gonna be included in the construction costs. In addition, the Smit Camp Family Foundation has generously pledged $1 million to the new senior center. The Smit Camp family has been an integral part of the fabric of Clovis for many decades, as you all know, and Earl regularly visited the senior center and played bridge with his friends, so he really understood the value of providing recreational opportunities for our seniors. Earl and Muriel honored family, education, and community, and it's fitting that the Smit Camp Family Foundation uses the naming rights affiliated with their donation to honor the legacy of Earl and Muriel. The final choice for the center's name will be brought forth at a future date, and tonight I would like to introduce their four children and one granddaughter. Allow me to introduce and come on up if you would like, Betsy Kimball, Carol Copeland and her husband Lee, Bob Smit Camp, Bill Smit Camp, and Betsy's daughter Katie Kimball Donnelly. Would any of you like to come up and speak? And I just thought it was interesting that in the history of Clovis is a picture of Earl right in there.
Thank you for the nice remarks about our parents. You know, I've heard a couple of themes tonight during this meeting, and their love of our Clovis community and their service to our community, and that pretty much sums up my mom and dad. As Shawna said, my dad loved to play bridge and he'd come down in his later years and he really enjoyed the senior center. Hi, family. Okay. You know, my dad, if we were ever down in the dumps when we were growing up, he'd take us aside and he'd say, "Okay, what's the problem? What have you done for your mother today? What have you done for your school today? Or what have you done for your community today?" So then, you know, we kind of hung our heads. That made us feel really bad and really guilty, so then we'd have to go out and help our mother or our school or do something. So we were raised to serve our community too, and we had great role models in our mom and dad. And I'd kind of like to close too. This has been a very crazy, very kind of depressing struggle for everybody this year. You know, my dad, our dad was a Marine, and he fought in the South Pacific. He was wounded in the Battle of Pellul, but he was a captain and was able to lead his unit back behind the people we were fighting against and come out of it. And I just want everybody, we all have people that have fought in so many wars previously, the First World War, the Second World War, the Civil War, you know, all our classmates that fought and died in the Vietnam War, and then the wars, our children's friends that have died in the Middle East wars, and they fought because of freedom. And my dad so believed in America, and he so loved this community, and he fought for freedom. And so I just want to say for the whole Smit Camp family that we would like to see and to hear freedom ring now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, unless you have any questions of me.
Any questions of staff?
I want to know where the rest of the Smit Camps are, Bill.
He's here. He's hiding in the corner.
He's normally shy and retiring. I just, I don't know, mayor, now that I've interrupted, just to comment, what a wonderful gesture on behalf of the Smit Camp family. Your generosity just keeps going, so thank you for being there. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other questions for staff? Bob, is that, are you finished with your report? I just didn't want to...
I was gonna just wrap it up.
Go ahead and wrap it up. Yeah, we'll finish.
So staff recommendation for the two action items is for city council to award a construction contract for the Landmark Square to AMG and Associates in the amount of $16,650,300, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city, and also for city council to award the construction management services contract for Landmark Square to Kitchell CEM Inc. in the amount not to exceed $400,000, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city.
Good. Thank you, Thad. Any questions for staff? Bob?
I should have waited for Bob. We're probably gonna ask the same question, I don't know. So David, any further comments on the letter that we received from the Construction Industry Force Account Council?
No, Scott did handle that matter, but if there's some further questions, I think there's someone in the public that's gonna speak about that, but I don't think there's anything extra to add at this point, but if there are some questions after you hear from public comment, then Scott can get up and answer those.
Okay. All right, thank you. I don't have any questions.
Bob? Can we ask about our questions on this though, from the letter? I mean, I see that the discrepancy is only $26,000, and so ultimately, in the end, they are still the lowest responsible bidder because it was $16,650,000. So if they sort of accounted for that prevailing wage to be put in, is my understanding of that correct, that they were only short in disclosing $26,485?
I think, I guess we may need to hear from AMG, but city staff's position is that we sought clarification from AMG. We received their proposal from the ceramic tile subcontractor, which was the $67,000 and change. As far as I understand, the revised proposal that's included in that letter from ceramic, the ceramic tile subcontractor, was not provided to AMG. So I think AMG's position back to the city has been, the only proposal they received from the tile sub is the $67,000 one, not the $93,000 one. So AMG's position is there is no discrepancy. That amount, the $67,000, is less than one-half of 1% of their total bid, which, under the public contract code, does not require that that subcontractor be listed.
Okay. So in other words, what we have done does not disqualify AMG in our RFP processes and bidding processes?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, our determination after following up with AMG from the initial bid protest and the same issue was raised in this letter that you received this morning, we've already vetted, gone through that with AMG. We're confident that their proposal is responsive and that they weren't required to list that subcontractor in their bid.
Okay. But is my presumption also accurate in that, let's say if it is that $93,000, they would still be the lowest bidder? It would take almost a whole million before, you know, the next person, number two, is in line, so...
I see where you're going with your analysis, and it's a correct analysis. However, I will point out, under the public contract code, if in fact they receive their proposal of $93,000, they are required to list that subcontractor. But it's an interesting issue and one that we may get into a little bit later based on the comments. However, there are remedies for failing to list that subcontractor, and again, our determination is, at this stage, they're a responsive bidder. I think staff's position and our position is, we cannot, I guess, presume that they're going to violate the subcontracting law after the award of the contract. If that happens, there are remedies in the law for imposing penalties or complaints to the contractor state license board, but we can't, I guess, we can't, our position is, we can't assume they're going to violate that at this stage and use that as a basis not to award. Even the public contract code provision 4106 says after the award of the contract, if the prime contractor, which is AMG in this instance, if the prime contractor violates any provision, then there are remedies available after the award of the contract. We haven't gotten to the award of the contract yet.
And I see that in our city engineer's letter too, we stated those code sections as well.
That's correct.
Okay. My other question is with regards to the construction management services of the $400,000, and it's not to exceed that. My, I guess my requirement is that, and it says here, will last the entirety of the construction contract and through project closeout. So my hope or my understanding is that if we should reach $400,000, they are still working for us for free after that until the contract or the building is built. Is that my understanding? Because, you know, sometimes it's long, sometimes it's short, and sometimes it's simple, sometimes it's complicated, but that cap of $400,000 is with the caveat that they do it up to that, plus up to when the contract ends?
So the caveat for that would be, once they get to that $400,000, we would have to have another agreement or amendment to the agreement. They have no control over the length of the project in that sense, so we would cap at that point and decide at that point, if we got to it, whether or not we would continue to have services from them.
That's expensive. And I thought we, don't we have someone on staff who's starting to do contract management? And are this more complicated where we will need to contract them?
Correct. We consider one of the biggest projects we've done for quite a while in the city, and we will be tag teaming this with city staff, our city construction management staff, and an independent consultant to do it. So there's gonna be a lot of time spent on construction management, and it'll be in-house and with the services.
Yeah, just to kind of echo what Thad has said, that this is a big, big project. This is a bigger building project than the city has undertaken probably since the civic center was constructed, and it is complicated. There's coordination between different agencies, probably, possibly, different contractors. So, and at the same time, we're gonna be building Fire Station Number 6. So we do have a very strong construction management team, but they are also pretty busy with all the other jobs going, the road projects we have going, utility projects and such. So staff felt it was prudent that this is a good investment to bring in a professional construction manager for the Landmark Square project, and they will be working in conjunction with our in-house staff, as Thad has said. And we will also be bringing in or proposing, coming back to council, when we do that bid award, a construction manager on the Fire Station project. These are two very visible, high-profile projects, and also they are, they're building projects, and not to disparage our construction management people at all, because we have a very good department and a very good building department, but most of what we build as a city is not buildings. It's roads, it's utilities, it's that type of thing. This is just a more complicated project, and we thought it would be just prudent to have that extra layer of management, and we feel that it'll actually, having that level of expertise, will pay for itself in the delivery of the project and the reduction of change orders and making sure things are done right. So that's why we're doing this.
And my hope is that our staff will gain much experience from this relationship, so that way, when we move forward in the future, we can start to handle a lot of the stuff in-house. So let me just go back to that $400. So if they reach that $400,000 before the contract ends, they come back and we talk about more monies for them? Is that sort of how it's written then?
That's correct.
But if they don't reach the $400,000 and the contract is finished, then they're just paid whatever they bill us, up to that amount?
Correct.
Okay. And that's typical? I mean, they don't, I mean, all I'm saying is they know what to build, they know what it is, it's there, it's kind of like, kind of like the contractor, I know they bring in change orders all the time, but I'm just saying they know what it is. I like it more definite, so that way, every time it comes back before us, it's always, makes it, it seems like we are the one mismanaging the funds because it's a request from the contractor. So I want, I trust your expertise. If you say this is how it's done, this is how contracts are, then okay, but I would prefer where $400, you know this is a lot, it'll cover the contract?
It's typical of this type of contract for consulting services. Right now, we're setting it up on pretty much an hourly basis for a full-time position, and that being the case, it'll... And that being the case, the, it'll, we'll be able to, on, based on their rates, we can, uh, we can accommodate a full-time position for an entire year. So, we don't foresee it going over the 400,000, and that's why we set it at the 400,000. Um, and that, so we're comfortable with that at this point.
Okay. My final comment is just, I, I really want to thank the Smith Camp family for, um, your generosity, especially to, to our seniors. And I, I am one who appreciates and honors our seniors a lot. And for you to allow the city to continue to honor our seniors and the, the foundations that they have built for this community, i- it, it means a lot to me as, as your representative. And thank you for thinking of us, because there are times in which our seniors, um, yeah, especially during this time, where they can't even come together. And how, how valuable being together will be once we open. Because I, one day will be at that age and, and when you're at that age, you, you don't want money. You just want people. You want time with people more than anything. And this place will allow our seniors to have time with others and, and to, to really enjoy, um, you know, the, what they've done and what they've given to us. So, thank you so much for your generosity. Thanks, Von. Lynn, did, did you want to say anything before I open this to the public?
Yeah, thanks, Drew. Just a couple of, um, comments, um, for Thad or Luke. Could you just give us a quick update on the, any other additional work with the Di Benedettos on their, uh, adjacent parcel to this work?
David, David will, Dave will answer your questions for you.
No, there was this dead silence. I'm thinking, well, who's going to do that? David.
Sorry, I got hit the right button there. The Di Benedetto family, um, and the, the business that was operating on the site began to clear the property uh, sometime during the late summer, uh, about this time that the city provided a, a notice that we were proceeding with developing the project. And, uh, we had a responsibility to provide a 60-day notice at that time. So they started to clear the site and made some pretty good progress. And, uh, the site clearance, uh, slowed and then seemed to stop. And eventually, we learned that the, the family had a, uh, a death in the family. And, uh, that complicated some communication internally, uh, both with the family and with their council. Uh, so we have been able to successfully reengage with the, the family. And it sounds like their intent is to, um, help us move forward expeditiously and get the site cleared so that we can go in and, and move the, move the property, uh, through the, uh, excuse me, move the fence and the gates to the new property line and, and get our contractor, uh, in as we, we've intended. So I'm not sure if that was a specific question or if that was, uh,
Actually, that, that was my fault. My question, thank you for that. And my question was more around any development, um, progress or plans that, had they moved forward or, and again, our sympathies to the family for the passing of Mr. Di Benedetto. Um, but is any, anything in their development side of the equation that you've seen from them?
You know, it's interesting, about two-thirds of the way through my sprawling answer, I, I second guessed myself and wondered if that wasn't the question that you were trying to ask.
Well, I, I could have asked a better question, so we could go with that. So we'll, we'll, I'll meet you in the middle, but, uh, thanks for that. But any, any, any updates on the development plans themselves?
Yeah, the, the answer to that question is much shorter. Um, no, there, there hasn't been any additional activity with regard to development applications, um, or, or pre, pre-application processes on the site. I know there have been some folks that are looking at the site and, uh, Andy Hosler has been active and working with some, some folks that have some interest. But, uh, at this point, we have not received any, any applications or any indications of any applications.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Drew, a couple more questions. Um, related to the St. Agnes revenue that, uh, is, uh, accounted for in the statement that you showed on your slide and on page 70. Uh, confirmation that they are still interested in this property, given all the shifts in healthcare at the moment?
Yeah, we've been in touch with, with the hospital representatives. Uh, they're interested in, in the progress. They want to know the, uh, group, the, uh, action that's taken tonight. They're very interested in. So as far as we know, they, they intend to proceed and I'll look over to Andy to see if he has any. Uh, Andy has given his raised thumb, is, is, that's the, the most current information, so.
Okay, thanks.
They're in the game.
Thanks. And then, uh, two more final comments. Von, to your comment, uh, that $400,000 for construction management, I think, as I reflect back on the construction of the wastewater plant, different model, different, I, I understand that, but it really was worth it to have somebody whose entire focus was dedicated to that project. So I do think it, it actually saves money over time. Um, and then the rest of the city's projects can also go forward. Because if some, one of our staff had to step out and do this full-time, our own, you know, other projects would, would, um, probably, uh, slow down. So, I just wanted to, from, add, add my two cents. And then my last comment is on the Transit Center. We, uh, announced the naming of that as the, uh, William H. Harry Armstrong Transit Center. Assuming that's still a go, I just wonder if we could start talking about it with that name on it? Um, I've had a couple of inquiries from some of his family members. And so when we, as we talk about it more, um, I think joining the Smith Camps in that center would be kind of a neat thing. Um, but I, I, I just wonder if we might start talking about that as we move along.
Hi Lynn, this is Shawna. Yeah, we can start doing that.
Thanks, yeah, I see that would.
That was always the plan.
Yep, yep. Well, they have a rendering that says so, so it's definitely the plan. But I think, um,
Yep.
I- i- in, in some ways, with, with Harry's name and, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Smith Camp's name, it's kind of a neat monument to some of the old, uh, old-time leaders of our community that got us where we are today. And Von, by the way, I am of the age to appreciate the senior center, so I'm there. So, thank you, thanks, thanks again to the Smith Camps.
You only have to be 50.
Oh, man. Oh, gosh, I should have been there 20 years ago practically. Thank you. Thanks, thanks, Drew.
Thank you, Lynn. Uh, any other member of the council have a question? No. Um, I will open this up to the public. Any member of the public in chambers wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, uh, do we have anybody on the web?
Yes, we have Justin Bachman. Justin, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Uh, my name is Justin Bachman. I am the Regional Compliance Manager with the Construction Industry Force Count Council. Uh, we are a nonprofit organization dedicated to ensuring public agencies' compliance with the California Public Contract Code. Through our efforts, we seek to ensure a fair, transparent, and level playing field for all public works contractors. I do want to just address one thing that was stated earlier was, uh, the city has recognized that the exclusion of prevailing wages and what was submitted by the lowest bidder, uh, and nothing further has been provided to the city from that bidder to resolve that problem. So I do want to identify that issue. Um, as you guys know, earlier today, I sent a letter to all the members of the council identifying concerns that CFAC has with staff's recommendation to award the Landmark Square, uh, Senior Activity Center and Transit Center project as presented. Through information obtained during the course of our investigation, we have identified a violation of the Subletting and Subcontracting Fair Practices Act, which is found in Public Contract Code 4100, the SEC. For sake of time, details of our findings can be found in the aforementioned letter and packet that I sent. Uh, due to the circumstances, it is our recommendation that the, that the council opt to not award this contract as recommended by staff, but instead, ask staff to reevaluate all bids to ensure responsiveness and full compliance with the California Public Contract Code requirements. We have also been made aware that a bid protest was filed for findings similar to ours. And while we cannot speak on behalf of, of specific contractors, it is apparent that this violation and concern is well-recognized by the contracting community. An alternative recommendation would be to reject all bids and rebid the project to be awarded on a future date. Either of these recommendations would eliminate any possible legal repercussions the city may face for failing to recognize and enforce the requirements set forth in Public Contract Code statutes. I do want to thank you for your time tonight and also for taking an unbiased approach to reaching your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bachman. Uh, do anybody else online?
I had a question for Mr. Bachman, if I could.
Mr. Bachman, if you're still there?
Yes.
Great. Uh, Mr. Bachman, this is Bob Wayland, one of the council members here. And, uh, my question to you is, um, uh, based on the opportunity for remedies that are going to be available, um, for any violation of the, um, of the law in this regard, uh, what is it about your suggested remedy that makes it better than the remedies that are avai- other remedies that are available under the law?
So mainly that the, the violation and the issue has already been identified before the contract has been, has been awarded. So typically, uh, the remedy that was spoke about earlier by staff, uh, that would be taken should that issue be found after the contract was awarded. Uh, at which point the CSLB would be involved, um, and, and that's the route you go. But due to the circumstances and what you guys have already seen and heard, uh, the issue's there. And, and that is why our recommendation is to nip this in the bud before it goes to that point. Um, you know, and, and we're not asking for anything more than just a reevaluation for responsiveness and full legal compliance. Um, but the alternative recommendation is always to reject all bids and rebid this project. Um, sometimes that is, that is easier, and, uh, so either way, we, we would be, um, okay with.
And it's, uh, may I get, Mr. Bachman, uh, so what is it that you believe, um, about this process that allowed the, uh, AMG to have, uh, an unfair advantage? Or is your position not that they had an unfair advantage, but that you believe that because they did not include, uh, the, um, the details of the Visalia Ceramic, um, subcontractor, um, because they did not know, in fact, at the point, that they were over, um, half a percent of the total value of the project, that, um, somehow that is just a violation of the law? And therefore, the proper remedy in your mind is to go ahead and just rebid everything?
Yeah, so that is correct. We are a legal compliance organization. That is what we're about. So when we identify problems, we do have to address it, uh, which is what we're doing here tonight. Um, and in, yes, in an effort to have that happen, that, that's why we've provided these recommendations. Simply legal compliance. And overall, while it might not, well, it may not seem like this is, uh, providing an unfair advantage to any certain contractors, um, there are very unique ways that contractors can obtain un- or, uh, uh, unfair advantages, sorry. So, yes, you know, on, on plain sight or on face value, it may not seem that way. But the intention of the Public Contract Code is to protect all contractors and the public from misuse of public funds, uh, to ensure fairness and, and, you know, everything that I provided in that later, letter earlier today.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bachman. I appreciate your perspective and certainly we want to follow laws as we go through this process. I'm just not yet satisfied that the remedy that you propose is probably the best one, um, that is available, uh, as a choice for the city council at this, uh, at this point, for some of the reasons that have been mentioned by Von and also by staff. Uh, but I am, uh, curious to learn a little bit more about, um, how this process develops further. So I appreciate, uh, your comments in the comments, um, registered through your letter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bachman. Any other, do we have anybody else online?
Yes, we have Anthony Traverso. Anthony, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name's Anthony Traverso. I'm one of the two principals of AMG and Associates. Uh, AMG and Associates is honored to build this project for the city of Clovis. We are a public works contractor. 95% of the work that we perform is in the public works arena. This is what we do. On average, for the last three years, $75 million, uh, per year in public works construction. Our largest active project currently is a $43 million performing arts center for the Allen Hancock College. Our average current project size is about $18 million. Our onsite team that is slated to construct this project is currently finishing a $14 million community center of similar size and scope. We have never violated Public Contract Code. Staff is 100% correct in about AMG's, uh, position and the sublisting and remedies outlined in the Public Contract Code. We understand the project is prevailing wage. AMG and its subcontractors will comply with these requirements. We perform in-house labor compliance, as well as, uh, comply with all DIR regulations and reporting. We are proud that we have listed the majority of our subcontractor partners to be local to the Clovis and Fresno area. This is very important to us. No violation in our bid documents exists. And we look forward to working with the city and the construction manager on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Traverso. Any questions for Mr. Traverso? Seeing none, uh, do anybody else online?
No.
Uh, Mr. Court, do we get any correspondence on this other than the letter from, uh, CIFAC?
Nothing beyond that.
I, I'm sorry, I, I didn't.
Sorry, nothing beyond that.
Okay. I will close public comments and come back to the council for discussion or for action. Question for Thad real quick, Mayor. How long did the process take, Thad, from the opening of the bid process to kind of where we are today?
Well, the bids were open on the 13th of November and this has been continuous up until this morning, so it's, uh,
It's only about a month?
Yeah.
That, our, our F P process is only a month?
Well, it, this wasn't a RFP process.
Okay, this is bid process?
This is a bid process. So that when the bids were open on November 13th, that's when we had all information and that's, and from there, we scheduled the, uh, the, the council meeting date.
Okay.
And in between that time is when we, uh, we got a lot of information from the, from the contractors and, and everything else happened.
So to, to do what Mr. Bachman said would take how much more time?
You, you mean to rebid it?
Yeah, to rebid and then to bring it, you know, to be like where we are tonight. Month, two months?
You're probably looking, you're probably looking almost three months.
Three months?
Yeah.
And, I don't know if Mr. The AMG, three months, the cost potentially can be greater than 30,000?
Um, correct. And, and if you rebid, I mean, you, you don't know what you're going to get. You might get more bidders, you might get less, you might get a higher bid, you might, might get a lower bid. I mean, it's, it's hard to really determine. Um, at this point, rebidding the project, it, it really complicates things, um, anytime you do it. Because now, um, the prime contractors know what the other prime contractor, contractors did. And then there's, often see a lot more games going on, so it, it's hard to.
And, and I just want to, for the record, one more time, uh, for our city attorney, you, you are confident what, what the staff, the process that we have used and the, the, with all the documentation presented, we, we did everything according to the bid rules that are laid out?
Yes, that's correct. And I would point out, in Mr. Bachman's letter, he, he suggests two alternatives. I think the city already complied with the first one. Thoroughly review all bids for compliance with the act, which we've done. I think staff has already engaged in that process. We received information from SEALs, which was the fourth low bidder, with a bid protest raising these same issues. When staff went back with AMG and inquired of AMG
Yes.
to get clarification, and AMG provided that clarification. Um, and then staff's response letter, I think, lays that all out. And then I think Mr. Traverso, tonight, provided further clarification on his.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I think I just want to start with some comments and then I'll make a motion.
Can I ask Lynn if she has anything before you do a motion?
Sure.
Lynn, do you have any, uh, do you have any comments before Bob makes his comments and then makes a motion?
Thanks, Drew. I would just have a co- a comment and then I'm happy to, uh, follow Bob's motion. But just discussion on the item. I do think that, um, this really is a significant action tonight, uh, this project. I feel like that sign, like coming soon, has been up on that property for probably not all that long. But I don't know, maybe Luke, three years or more-ish? Four years, three years? So we've just, we've been a long time in the works. And I think what's significant, aside from honoring families like this, Smith Camps and Mr. Armstrong, I think it says that even in times that are difficult, the city of Clovis can move forward and make investments that will, uh, serve our community well in the next 50 years or beyond. So, I just, I want to compliment staff. I know it's been hard. Um, I know they've spent a lot of time working on it. So I just wanted to note the significance in our city. I think, Luke, you said this was. I think, Luke, you said this was, I think, the largest building project we will have done, probably, is that right, Luke? Nod. Oh, Luke's running. I can see Luke running. That's so fun.
Yeah, with our social distancing, it's, we have a limited number of microphone spots. Yes, I think this is the, the largest buildings that we will be building since, probably since we built the Civic Center.
Yeah.
So it's a very significant expansion to our civic presence here in Old Town Clovis.
Yeah, so thanks, Luke. I just wanted to, I just wanted to watch you run across the front. That was good. Good job. I just wanted to comment on that. I think it's really an important night, and I just want to thank staff and all involved, again, to the Smith Camp family, to Harry's legacy in that transit center. So that's all. Thanks, Drew.
Thank you. Bob, before you do that, I just want to join Lynn with, I want to thank the Smith Camp family for their generosity and their generosity to our community for decades, and we really appreciate you're an integral part of our community. I don't know if anybody from the De Benandino family is listening tonight. If you are, we, on behalf of the city, we want to give you our condolences for Tony's passing. He was a, he was a very nice man, and we're saddened to hear of his passing. I'm sorry, Bob, now you can go ahead.
Thank you. I think I want to address first the letter from, I'm calling it CFAC. I don't know if that's the acronym or how you prefer to have the title of your organization described. But I do thank Mr. Bachman for bringing to our attention the, the issue that he raised in the letter. I want to thank Mike Harrison for doing the same, and then also, I think it was SEAL who also brought this to our attention. You know, the law is there for a reason, and the reasons are stated in the CFAC letter. And it's important for us to, you know, understand this and kind of go into this with our eyes wide open as far as, you know, what, what happened here. And, you know, I don't assign any ill will or malice to any party that decided to, you know, that brought this to our attention. And I think that there's, you know, this is a very high-dollar item. It's one that I think a lot of people care about within the community of Clovis and those people who are going to be, you know, participating in the process and attempting to, you know, conduct business, keep people employed as we go through that process. So we're not, nobody up here is giving it short shrift. But I do believe that as a result of what has been brought to our attention, that we as a council have an opportunity to make a decision with our eyes wide open. We understand what has happened here. AMG understands what has happened here. Visalia Ceramic Tile has made clear to us through their communication what is involved in their subcontracting bid. And if we were to remedy this by taking it out to bid again, yes, it may be delayed by another three months, and there may be some elevation in costs as a result of setting it out for another three months. But I think to Thad's point is that it, it almost creates an environment in which things get even more complicated when it comes to just the focus of being fair in this process, because other people who want to bid on this are going to have an understanding that perhaps maybe they didn't have before. So I think it just ends up opening up a can of worms if we try to remedy it at this level. The law has remedies. If there's been a violation of the law, let the law work through its processes and figure out what the remedies are or what would be appropriate. So I think for us to kind of intervene at this point is, you know, going to be problematic. But again, I want to emphasize how much I appreciate the professionalism shown by all the parties that were interested in bringing this to our attention. I also want to take a moment to discuss the Smith Camp family, and I, and I can't help but thinking at this time, I've just got Earl in the back of my head saying, "Stop thanking us, just get the damn thing built," right? And, and so I, I just want to know, I want you to know that, you know, this has been a special night for us. There's been a lot going on, and I think that from, from my perspective at least, you know, the Smith Camp family means a lot to me, means a lot to my mom. And the recognition tonight of how important it is that a community like Clovis continues to move in a direction of, I think, excellence comes not because of what we do up here, but because of the people who've come before us, and not just the people up on the dikes who've come before us, but the people out in the community who've come before us, the people out, and staff that have come before us. So anyway, I just wanted, I wanted to make those comments, and we'll get the damn thing built. So the, in light of those comments, I move that we approve the bid award for CIP fifteen dash oh three Landmark Square and authorize it to execute the contract on behalf of the city.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Will clerk call roll, please? Councilor Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilor Flores, sorry, Abstain. Councilor Moana Tua?
Aye.
Councilor Whelan?
Aye.
Mayor Besseger?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero with one exemption.
Then I move that we approve the award of a construction management services contract for CIP fifteen dash oh three and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city.
I'll second that as well.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Clerk, call roll. Councilor Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilor Flores and Abstain. Councilor Moana Tua?
Aye.
Councilor Whelan?
Aye.
Mayor Besseger?
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero with one exemption. And we have receiving file on the other ones. Let's call Jose Beck. If, if there's no objection, I would like to move item eleven up. Our friend Pat Nguyen is here, and maybe we can let Orlando ride off onto the sunset into his retirement just a little earlier.
No, he has to stay until midnight, for heaven's sakes.
So if there's no objection, I'm going to call item number eleven under administrative items. Consider approval of a supplement to the land tenure agreement with the Clovis Botanical Gardens Committee to allow special events on the premises located at the northeast corner of Aluvial and Clovis Avenues inclusive of live entertainment, alcohol sales, and food trucks subject to an approved administrative use permit. And our friend Orlando Ramirez is the presenter for the very last time. Orlando?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, this is my last one.
Don't screw it up, man.
I'll try not to. What if I do it in Spanish, then only Jose can follow along? So my wife and I, we visit the gazebo gardens on an, on an often basis, and we have been, I had this vision that, looking at the botanical garden, I said, "Man," you know, being the kind of person I am, I said, "We can do this better." So I thought, so my passion got in the way, and I started the ball rolling and reached out to some folks, and I talked to Dwight, and as Dwight, in his typical way, says, "Lando, go for it, just do it." So I went for it. I contacted Pat Nguyen, and, and Pat said, "You know, Lando, we were thinking the exact same thing. How do we turn this area here so we get more people out here and possibly do some additional fundraising opportunities to help us move on to the next level of what we would like to see of our goal and our vision here?" So that's where the vision came, to get food trucks out there. As everyone knows, in planning and building engineering, I love to eat, and I love food trucks. So it was a perfect win-win for me, so who did I call? Pat Nguyen. I said, "This works out great." So we met on several occasions, and I had this grandeur of ideas of what can happen there with the botanical gardens. And maybe it was a little too aggressive to begin with. I wanted this to be a venue very similar to, or even better than, the gazebo gardens. And reality hit right in the face and said, "You know what? Scale it back a little. There's a little more involved than just throwing a bunch of food trucks out there."
Orlando, can I stop for this a second? I just realized that this is across the street from my house. Do I need to walk away and?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to walk away.
So we went along this path here, and we had several meetings with Pat and our committee, and we met with Luke and other staff members as well. And we ran into a few issues as to how this could actually come together. It wasn't just as simple as bringing out some food trucks, having to drive into the area and get going. There was an administrative use permit process, which is a new ordinance that we adopt to allow food trucks. There was daily use permits involved. There was ABC involved. There was a neighborhood outreach involved as well, which was facilitated in November. We all, staff attended that neighborhood outreach, and unfortunately, not a single person from the neighborhood attended, but we were there ready to answer any questions. So Pat felt that part of the food trucks would be, event would be to have alcohol sales. We involve the police department, so that's where the daily use permit comes in. The, we support the use, we support the food trucks and the, the additional events out there, with the caveat that because of COVID environment, ABC is not actually handing out any ABC license for outdoor events, so that's something that we'll have to consider for the future, whenever this is, this goes away. But overall, staff supports this request to have food trucks at the botanical gardens. I believe we're looking at eight events between April and May of twenty twenty-one. And with that, Pat has a presentation she wanted to run before the council.
Yeah, there we go. Mr. Mayor Protem and council members, my name is Pat Nguyen. I live at eighteen fifteen North Pistachio in Clovis. Orlando just covered a big part of what I was going to tell you about, so I will be brief. We have entered into several negotiations, several contracts with, we, by we, I mean the Clovis Botanical Garden, and by the way, I am here with our president and Clement Sales, who lives in Clovis. We've entered into a number of agreements to get where we have gotten now, I believe back in nineteen ninety-eight. The northeast corner of Clovis and Aluvial was a big weed patch, and the city was land banking it for a park. A man by the name of Gordon Russell sought one of the whole darn eight acres for a botanical garden. City said, "We'll give you four." That was our first agreement. Our second agreement with the city came about after we had built out the original one acre and were good stewards of it. And if you go through the garden at any time, you can see that original older area. It is really beautiful, and it has been taken care of. In two thousand and ten, we started our second agreement, and that's been serving us very well. And then one day, I remember getting this wild, crazy telephone call from two members of your staff, Dwight Crowell and Orlando, and boy, were they damn cool. And I thought it'd be a pretty good idea, so I spoke to some of our people at the garden, and we came in, and we had a really great meeting, and we were all set to go. And then Renee came in and said, "I guess you know that food trucks on city property are illegal." Well, that kind of put a little cold water on that. So we went back to the drawing board. City attorney's been working on an ordinance, and we would really like to put that into play at the botanical garden. Food trucks are really very popular now. People are having them on church parking lots, that sort of thing. Think of how great it would be to be able to have something like this in a beautiful garden. People come and they sit underneath the white canopy or in the pavilion, or just stroll through the garden, and you can sit down on one of the many seat walls or benches with your friends, relax, have a drink, and eat tacos and socialize. That would be a great thing. It brings families together, which is one of our goals. We've also seen that, we've done our own little cost benefit analysis, and we can make some money off of this, and I'm afraid that's kind of going to be the bottom line, to see if the money we make is worth the work that we have to put into it. Yes, we do want to sell beer here. Could I give the, how do I change the? Yeah, okay. So some of our goals are to provide a place for families to come, to relax, to enjoy. We want a family-friendly environment here, and something that will also be of benefit to us as far as financial goals, and something that will get our name out there. I don't think a week goes by, but what we don't hear from somebody who comes in and they say, "Wow, this place is great. We had no idea you were here." And we've been there for almost twenty years. I think if this food truck idea catches on, people will start to come, and it will also give more publicity to the garden. So the agreement that we entered into, and if I could, there you go, thank you, with the city, was that we would have eight nights of food truck nights for the year just to try it out. We selected Thursday night. Friday and Saturday, and remember, we've been before you for our pavilion. It's built, it's so successful. With the possible exception of July and August, we have that thing rented out. Just about every weekend, so we have weddings there, we have parties there. And in case you're interested, we think it would be a fantastic place for a political fundraiser. I mean, it really serves a lot of purposes. So we chose Thursday night, plus Renee and the rest of the people at the city didn't want us to compete with Farmer's Market downtown. So we're looking at April, April eighth through May twenty-seventh. We will be in operation from five to nine P.M. We have notified the neighbors. We did send out notifications to everyone within six hundred feet. We got two others back. I don't know if you have them. One of them was from somebody who was really anxious to come and said, "Oh, please do it." One of them had reservations, and the issue that he raised, I think it was a man that wrote to us, was one, it was a daytime thing, and the concern was parking, that there was this one day when we had our biggest event of the year, which is our Spring Into the Garden event, and it coalesced with someone else having their biggest event, and they were at the shelters in the park. It was a Lual thing, and it was a mess. We agree, and we apologize to the neighborhood. So to ameliorate that, what we have done, if we're going to have a large event, and we only have them like about twice a year, but if we are, we pay for and rent the park facility, and we usually find a way to use it. So there's not that conflict, and there's not that extra parking that might spill over into the neighborhood. But this is going to also be in the evening. The park use drops off about that time, so there will be areas in the parking lot that are available for use, because people who are using the trail in the park, that sort of thing, do tend to go home. Plus, people can park all along the east side of Clovis Avenue. So I think under those circumstances, parking should not really be a problem. During the daytime, whether we're there or not, there's a parking problem in that park, and coming out of there is a bit of a danger. I don't know if you can see now, the aerial map that's been put up there. The yellow arrow is focused on the green canopy. Let me orient you a little bit. There on the right-hand side is the Dry Creek Trail and the Dry Creek, and two, at the bottom there is the park, and then over on the left-hand side is Clovis Avenue. So the poppy gate where the people enter into is not really on the map, but it's there at the bottom. The yellow area is pointing to the green canopy, which will be selling beverages under. Yes, we will sell beer there, but we'll also sell a lot of other beverages, too. The orange arrow is pointed back to the service road. I don't know how familiar you are with it, but there's a service road that comes in the back entrance, goes around the pavilion. You can see the red roof there on the pavilion, and comes up alongside, it literally bisects the garden. We will, are planning to have no more than six food trucks along that area, and they'll be parked along there. That blue area is pointing to our white canopy, which will have chairs and tables. We want to have music there, some of the local bands. We've been having a music night the end of the fall. We've had to postpone it, or actually cancel it now because of COVID. We'd like to start this on April sixth, but if COVID is anything like what it is now, we won't do that. We'll probably postpone it to the fall. If it's just minor and not a heavy thing, we will still insist then on CDC recommendations for COVID prevention with masks and social distancing. But if it is really a serious problem, gee, we hope with vaccines and that sort of thing that they'll get an end of control. sort of thing that they'll get an injury control. Uh, and if they don't, we will postpone it. We will be hiring a security guard, uh, keep an eye on things. So there will be a security guard at every event. Um, and other than the parking and that's the parking lot there. And like I say, there should be ample parking in the parking lot after five o'clock and along Clovis Avenue. So I'm pretty sure that'll keep it out of the neighborhood. Uh, other than that, I don't think I've forgotten or left anything out. And I promised Bob that I'd be as brief as I can. So I will shut my mouth and I will take questions from any of you that you might have about this.
Questions for Pat from Council?
Pat or Orlando, the land tenure agreement says that alcohol sales has to be used, consumption has to be kept within the premises, right?
Yes, yes.
And so how do we, how do you intend to keep that, especially when you're selling it sort of close to the entrance there?
Well, we also will plant the security guard there at the entrance.
Okay. So if they buy it, they have to stay inside?
They have to stay inside. They can take food home. A lot of people do that. That's fine. But no open cans of alcoholic beverages. Actually, they should have to drink everything in the garden. Uh, and we, you know, we've thought a lot of the alcoholic beverages, but, oh, we're going, something I did forget to tell you about. We will be putting all of this through a company called Fresno Street Eats.
Yes.
And we have met with their CEO, Mike Oz. They will be checking all of the public health and that sort of thing, records for the food trucks. And we will make sure that they have them too. We will, we will check on them. But he says that he can get beer donated from some of the beer gardens. That's probably going to be one of the few ways that we really make any money off of this. And people like tacos and beer. I mean, they just like it. Um, if there is any excessive intoxication or anyone trying to leave with open cans of beverages, that's why we have employed these security guards. And he will be there by the gate at every single event that we have.
But my other thought is, do you want to suspend that for the time being? Because sometimes people want to go to the park and enjoy and the meal. And so that's, I, it's not one way or the other. I'm just saying a thought as to how, how do we make it where, so you know, someone driving by can just also enjoy outside, because it's right next to the park. So I'm fine either way. I, I just bring it up because if we want to really adhere to everything that's strictly inside the botanical gardens, okay, because I can see the safety of five to eight during April, children are around, okay. But overall, I think it's a very responsible group. And so at the same time, how can we really make use of the entire space and allow the maximum amount of people to?
Mean people to enjoy the park while they enjoy the garden? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and eating, you know, because it's dinner time, right? So it's eating and so...
If they're not taking beer out, like our kids, and they want to go over and sit in the picnic area, unless someone has rented that at night, and generally they don't, they're perfectly free to do that. I mean, we're not going to, to lock them into the garden once they come. So that would be an option.
Councilwoman Moana too. That is typically what happens when you have these food truck gardens. Um, I live next to the one in, at North Point and a lot of times people just come get their dinner there and they drive away. And it's another way of getting dinner. So it provides an alternative method. And the vision we had is that the Dry Creek Trail would be a perfect opportunity for families to walk, grab their dinner and then sit somewhere in the park or watch their kids play in the, in the actual park area.
And I'm just trying to say, to get the sale of the alcohol is sort of what I'm trying, so that way they can actually get it and go home or, and/or sit in the park if we sort of suspend that land tenure agreement clause. I, I don't...
Actually, you can't drink alcohol in the public park, so you have to be in the city door.
Okay, then that helps.
No, that's not the reason we had to work all of this out, you know, with the alcohol. Long, have you been to the garden?
I haven't been in a while.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, I'm gonna give you a...
The last time I went, Nancy Morrison was still on the...
Yeah, that's been a while. You and I are Facebook friends. I'm gonna get in touch with you. Uh, as soon as I can walk a little better. You're gonna get a tour and I think that you might see why people just want to kick back there because it's really a nice place. So I'd like to...
And Fresno Street Eats is doing amazing things.
Yeah, they, they...
All over the community and just getting people out.
They're a very reliable group and we've had, oops, several meetings with Mike, who's been very helpful and I have a lot of faith in him to do the right thing. Any more questions? Oh, and Lynn, I guess you're listening. We're starting the planting on the children's garden.
Liz, you have any questions?
Awesome. I want to come see that too. I do. Thanks, Drew. Um, a couple of questions. So just so I'm following, Pat, when you were talking in the beginning, doing the work, um, and the comment was made that we can't have food trucks on city property. Is that, is that what I heard?
Well, that was what the former ordinance said. I believe I quoted you correctly, Renee?
The, the, the former ordi- hi, this is Orlando. The former ordinance actually prohibited food trucks throughout the city of Clovis. We amended that ordinance to allow for food trucks, subject to administrative use permit throughout the city and non-residential areas.
That's what this has been really all about, so.
That is correct.
So I, I think I was trying to get at, uh, this isn't a precedent that now in any city property, we can have a food truck. That ordinance has already been amended and that is possible for folks with an A U P, yeah?
It's my understanding. Is that correct?
David, that's my understanding as well. David, do you have anything?
No, but really, we're talking about the land tenure agreement, the property that's already been, uh, granted for the botanical garden's use. So the city allows food trucks now, but the land tenure agreement was not very clear. This will make it very clear. We're gonna have this trial run. We're gonna have food trucks, sell alcohol. If it works, come back, get another temporary agreement. And if that works, then you can actually amend the land tenure agreement and make it permanent. So this is again, test run.
Okay.
Really focusing not so much public land, but more on their garden territory.
The agreement. Okay, that makes sense. Um, and I think for staff particularly maybe, or I, I don't know, uh, any police feedback on, um, on the use, um...
Yeah, we will, we will have to get, I believe it's a safety permit.
It's, it's a daily use permit. The police department takes in the daily use permit. They distribute that to alcoholic beverage control as part of that review process. So PD hasn't been involved since the beginning we started this process. So they're well aware and, and are actually supportive.
And we will have to have them, one for every day that we, that we, uh, have an event out there. We will also have the fire department out. I don't think that's a big issue, um, because it's outdoors. It's along a service road. There is a service road I mentioned coming in the back entrance that bisects the garden. There's plenty of room for the food trucks and they'll be spread out. So I don't think fire is an issue, but we will have the fire department out to check it out before we start operating.
Okay. And then my final question, Drew, sorry. Um, I don't know what Fresno Eats is, because I eat in Clovis. I'm just kidding. So, uh, any local restaurants engaged in Fresno Eats or could, I, I just, I mean, we've done so much to try to, uh, you know, do the, all the restaurants and all the senior meals and all of that. Is there, I don't know who's involved in Fresno Eats. Are there any Clovis restaurants?
Well, Fresno Street Eats, so I'm pretty sure, correct me if I'm wrong, Orlando, that it is limited to food trucks. Is that correct?
Right, it's...
Street Eats.
Right, but are there any, are there any Clovis restaurant food truck operators?
We have been in discussion with Gastro Grill, which is a Clovis-based restaurant.
Yeah, okay.
House of Juju's is also considering a food truck, as well as Five Five Nine Tacos, which is a Clovis, uh, restaurant as it is.
Perfect. Thank you.
If we do get Clovis food trucks, I'm sure that we would give them a priority out there.
Nice, okay. Yeah, all right. Thanks a lot.
Bob, questions?
Uh, so I did have one. Fresno, so who, who's responsible for obtaining the permit, the daily use permit from ABC? Is, is it the, the, the botanical garden or is it...
It is the botanical garden. The botanical garden is responsible for the daily use permit, the administrative use permit, any fire department tent and canopy permits. It would be done through the botanical garden.
Who's actually selling the alcohol? Is it the botanical garden? Because that's, it's gonna be under the nonprofit organization then, right, for the ABC license?
Right, it'll be under five oh one C three.
So are they selling the alcohol?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Okay, that's good. That's, that's, that's good.
Yes, we are. And we should have mentioned, um, garden accepts the cost of all of the permits that we have to have, which is quite a few actually.
Okay, so that's good. That's all the questions I have. Any questions from, I'll, I'll open up to the public. Any questions from the public here on, at the chamber, council chamber? No? Any questions from the web?
None.
Any correspondence?
No.
Okay, so I'll bring you back to the council. What is your pleasure?
I'll move that, uh, we approve the supplement to the land tenure agreement as stated in this item.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second.
Councilor Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilor Flores?
Aye.
Councilwoman Moana too?
Aye.
Councilman Whelan?
Aye.
We have a abstention from Mayor Besseger.
So the motion carries for and one abstention.
We're not gonna let Orlando get away, are we?
Okay, we're gonna go to item number nine, consider introduction of an ordinance twenty dash O A, twenty twenty dash zero zero two, a request to amend the Clovis Development Code as a semi-annual cleanup to address changes, deletions, typographical, grammatical, and content errors as a result of the twenty fourteen Development Code update. City of Clovis is the applicant. Dave Merchant is our presenter. Dave?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. As noted, this is a request for an ordinance amendment, uh, that is processed as a Development Code update. A little bit of background here, the Development Code as it is currently formulated was adopted as a comprehensive, uh, or, or sort of mass update in August of two thousand and fourteen in conjunction with the, the general plan update. After that update was originally adopted, the city came back and, and did annual amendments in fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. The majority of the changes in each of those years really were focused on, um, correcting non-substantive errors and oversights or incorporating changes that had been adopted into state law. There were a few more substantive things that came along the way, but they were primarily just a correction of errors and oversights. And that's really kind of what we're doing this evening, uh, for the most part as well. So in terms of those non-substantive changes, uh, some examples that are packaged in, in the current, uh, code amendment include correcting a density reference for a very high-density residential. That's a zone district. We just made a cut and paste error with the original, uh, zoning ordinance. Uh, there's an addition of a mixed-use business campus, general plan designation is a consistent designation for the RT Park Zone. Again, that was just a, an oversight. Uh, we're updating incorrect section numbers for one section and we're moving homeownership standards from one location to another. So those are the kinds of non-substantive issues that, that are incorporated. Some of the highlights of this ordinance and not an exhaustive description here, because that would take a long time, but, uh, a description of some of the more interesting components include the addition of, uh, an allowance for electronic order fulfillment facilities in the C two zone district. That's really anticipating that over time, we're gonna have more reliance on online ordering and less necessarily on, um, traditional storefront retail. We're gonna add language recommending, uh, excuse me, regarding neighborhood meeting notice requirements that really stems from comments made from the community in, in terms of wanting to see more consistent notices for neighborhood meetings. Uh, adding a footnote to address maximum height for hotels in specific zone districts. That's a reflection of a request from our, our planning commission, not to see so many, um, consistent requests for extra height on hotels, which had become almost a norm. A addition of communication facilities and publicly owned telecommunications towers as a permitted use in open space. But something had, that had been allowed pre nineteen fourteen and we think was just errantly left out. It adds some, uh, flexibility for the city and how it manages and allows uses in its open space districts. We would add emergency electrical generators as a permitted use in residential zone districts. Again, this is, uh, a change that reflects, uh, the increasing interest on residential uses for emergency generators with the PG&E environment being what it is and rolling blackouts, uh, becoming kind of a norm. There's a lot more interest in these kind of generators. Uh, text would be revised for small and large daycare homes to comply with the state law. And then there is an entire new chapter addressing a timely, uh, submittal of public comments, really to discourage the, uh, data dumps that are sometimes generated right at or before public hearings by folks that oppose projects and want to make it, uh, difficult to, to consider those at the last minute. The planning commission looked at these and, and the entire batch of code amendments at their November nineteenth meeting. Uh, there was a focused discussion on some of the changes that reflected their prior, uh, comments, including like the hotel height and the data dump discouragement. Uh, some of the commissioners also discussed the use of a neighborhood meeting notice template in addition to the noticing standards themselves. And they ultimately recommended approval of the ordinance amendment with the addition of that, uh, neighborhood meeting template. Therefore, staff and the planning commission recommend introduction of the ordinance as presented in attachments two and three to the staff report. On behalf of the answer, any questions, if you have any?
Thank you. Any questions for Dave?
Uh, Bob, Dave, so possibly a lot of the stuff that we have seen with COVID is not here because this was probably done way prior to the COVID era. Is, is that assumption pretty correct?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been built really since the last time that we did an update. Um, so for over the last year or year and a half, we've been identifying some things. So it primarily was, was a little bit older stuff, but, uh, the last of it, for instance, the, uh, the incorporation of, um, electronic fulfillment centers, that was a relatively late addition that, uh, we added after talking with, with Andy Hostler.
And, and so stuff like outdoor dining, getting the permits, does that, has that been added in emergencies or, or, you know, how, how we sort of waive fees for them? So is that something that we considered or we put in? Or is that something just because it's COVID and we, we did not consider it serious enough to put it into our code?
So the, the current, the current Development Code allows outdoor dining, uh, at this point, typically with an administrative use permit. The exceptions that were made or have been made during, uh, the, the emergency order, uh, just sort of streamline that process and, um, during the emergency order allowed outdoor dining without going through the temporary use permit process. So there is a process for it. Uh, it's just been streamlined during the emergency order.
And then, um, I guess my, my thing is with regards to parking, um, I did see the actual, I didn't get to read it, but I see this, there are certain uses that I look at that we have allowed and built where parking is more than sufficient. For example, convalescent homes, elder homes and where the parking lot is just huge, but the use is very small. Have we updated any of that so that way land is better used other than just for parking lot? I know you put in here something for parking and forgot what it was. It was one of them, but I don't think it was...
Yeah, there's, there's, there's just one change that I can recall relative to parking and that's to, uh, reduce the amount of, uh, specific parking required for outdoor dining and make it the same ratio as, as, uh, indoor dining. So the, the ordinance as it sits today, um, for descriptive purposes, it basically penalized outdoor dining in terms of parking. It required parking at a higher ratio. And the change would just blend it and require that any, any dining area, uh, provide parking at the same rate. Uh, in, in terms of accommodating other adjustments to parking, those have not been identified. But if there is a, a specific issue that, uh, you'd like us to evaluate, we'd certainly be interested in, in saying it because we're always looking to identify best practice.
I think more for, um, the future moving forward. I don't want to delay anything that is presented here because I think anytime we can fix things up to make it clearer is better. But I think uses and evaluation... But I think uses and evaluating those uses that have already been built to see if, because sometimes our parking is just per square footage, a, and a, a certain use, even though may have a lot of square footage, may not have that type of parking need, and we can sort of reassess that. And so that's all. Thanks.
Hey Drew, I had a question if I might?
You may.
Thank you. Um, I forgot it now. Oh, I know. Um, I will admit, I read this, but I might have missed it. I was thinking along Vong's lines, some of the things that we've done relative to state, state law on what you can do with your garage and this accessory dwelling unit and all of that. Is that in this pass as well, or I, I saw accessory units, but I didn't read those as the, uh, accessory dwelling units. Is that, is that addressing those, some of those land or those laws that we've included because of state action?
Uh, all of the, the state's, uh, regulations on ADUs were, uh, addressed by the city in that urgency ordinance that you, uh, re-adopted at your last meeting.
Right.
So we do have, we do have comprehensive requirements for ADUs that are consistent with the, the latest state code, as well as our own local cottage home program. Uh, those aren't in here, uh, but those were adopted through the, the urgency ordinance process.
I think that's, would they need to be in here or you, obviously not? You're thinking they don't need to be included in here, just addressed through the ordinance process?
That, that's correct. We'll, we'll come back over the next six months and, uh, re-adopt the urgency ordinance as a conventional ordinance, uh, making sure that we catch any, uh, additional changes to the, to the state laws, uh, that happen in the next six months or so.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Drew.
Any other questions? I will open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? In chambers, seeing none? Do we have anybody online?
No.
Mr. Clerk, do we get any correspondence? Okay, I'll close public comments and come back to council for action.
All right, then.
I'll, um, I, what will I do? I'll do something. I lost my place. Number nine, I will, uh, make a motion to amend the Clovis Development Code as reported by staff. Sorry, I lost my place.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Clerk, call roll please. Councilor Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilor Flores?
Aye.
Councilman Wantatu?
Aye.
Councilman Whelan?
Aye.
Mayor Besseger?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Item ten is consider approval of a resolution, adoption, adoption of a resolution amending the 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. This item has, uh, been requested to be continued, but before I do, I will open it up for the public. Any member of the public in chambers wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
No.
And Mr. Clerk, do we get any correspondence?
We did not.
Okay, I'll close public comments and come back to the council for action.
I'll move that we continue this, um, item. Is there a date specific or we're just, uh, indefinite?
Uncertain.
Okay, continue to a date, uncertain.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk? Councilor Flo, uh, Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilor Flores?
Aye.
Councilman Wantatu?
Aye.
Councilman Whelan? Mayor Besseger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item twelve is consider approval of a resolution, final amendments of the 2019-2020 budget in conformance with the budget ordinance and receive and file year-end report for all funds as of June thirtieth, 2020. Gina Daniels is our presenter. Gina?
There we go. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Gina Daniels, the Assistant Finance Director. Unfortunately, our finance director, Jay Shingle, isn't able to be here tonight, so I'll be doing the presentation. Presentation? Okay. Okay, okay, thank you. Um, I'll be presenting three financial reports. The, uh, first one is the 1920 year-end report, um, the estimates, uh, to close compared to actuals. Uh, next would be the 1920 CAFR report, our audited CAFR. And finally, our first quarter report for this current fiscal year, 2021. So here's, okay. Um, for this year-end review, I'll be discussing the revenues in the general fund, the expenditures in the general fund, uh, other non-general funds, and some budget cleanup items. So the general fund, um, unallocated fund balance ended with a four million dollar, ended up with four million dollars more than projected. I mean, I'm sorry, ended up with a four million dollar balance, which is two million more than projected. This resulted from two items. The first is that revenues ended up one million more than projected. Um, and mostly from sales tax, and general fund expenditures ended up one million less than projected. Mostly savings from, um, public safety vacancies.
Gina, can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
So under that sales and use tax, um, it looks like, if I understand the document correctly, and I'm referring to, um, it looks like a table that identifies the sales and use tax on, it's my page three oh six. It says that there was a, a working budget, and then we made an adjustment. Um, and I'm just going to go through the sales and use tax. So our working budget was, uh, twenty-two-point-five million for sales and use tax, and then we made an adjusted, uh, COVID-nineteen budget. And, uh, then, uh, thought that it was going to be twenty million, nine-hundred-and-twenty thousand. And then it turns out that our actual revenues ended up coming in at twenty-two million, seventy-one thousand. So the sales and use tax actually came in less than what we had originally projected for our budget. Came in more than what we had adjusted because of COVID, and it appears as though it's come in maybe just a little bit less, like maybe four, a little less, maybe three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars less than we expected, um, after, uh, we, well, i- in our original budget. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay, so the impact of COVID, at least for this particular budget, when it comes to our sales and use tax, seemed to be, um, not as, uh, as significant as we originally thought. And in fact, did our sales and use tax, and I don't know this, maybe you can help me with this. Did our sales and use tax actually come in higher than the previous year's sales and use tax? So from our-
I, I would think so. I, I don't, yeah, I would think so.
All right.
Yeah, we, we adjusted it way down-
Probably in our CAFR, but I'll have to, I'm going to check on that.
So let me interrupt your-
Because everything's in the CAFR.
Everything's in the CAFR. So before Gina goes on, um, i- in these reports that Gina's going to be seeing here, it's, it's, it's important to kind of put back in the framework on our budgeting process. And, uh, you know, we came to council with our five-year forecast in, uh, the first week of March. And that five-year forecast is, uh, it, it's, it, it's importance cannot be overstated in how we use it because we use, we have to, when, when we budget for things, we have to make sure we, we not only afford them now, but we can afford them next year, next year. It's a long-term financial plan. And so we had prepared a budget for the current year, or we were working on the budget for the current year, but all of those figures were included in that five-year forecast. A week after we presented that to council, it kind of went out the window with the COVID. And we had really nothing to go on as to what to expect. So we came back with some, um, significantly reduced, um, estimates on our revenues for the last quarter of last fiscal year, um, and for the current fiscal year. Uh, what we are seeing, both when we get the final numbers, and Gina's presenting this report, you'll see kind of a common denominator here, that we, the, the numbers are coming in probably, you know, worse than we were planning at the beginning of last March when we did our five-year forecast, but better than our drastic COVID budget cuts.
Right.
So you're going to see that kind of recurring, um, both at the closeout of last quarter and the beginning of this quarter, uh, or the first quarter that she'll be presenting after the cap or what, what's happening in the first quarter here. But it's a common theme. Um, but it, it, because of those gyrations in our budget, this is, this is a very, uh, a very difficult budgeting year, um, and, and even with the data we have, it's difficult to, uh, to project too far out in the future. But you're going to see that kind of as a recurring thing. Uh, sorry to interrupt, Gina, I'll let you get back.
Well, I, I, I pulled up in the CAFR on page one hundred and thirteen, it's got a list of our, um, sales tax revenues from two thousand and eleven through two thousand and twenty. And, uh, in two thousand and nineteen, the sales tax revenues were twenty-one-point-five million. And it appears as though, um, despite COVID, our revenues came in, um, above the, um, the eighteen-nineteen budget. Our, our nineteen-twenty budget actually, uh, has improved by, it looks like five hundred thousand year-over-year despite COVID, which I, I'm just, I'm just commenting on, I, I guess, and clarifying, um, that that's a good thing. I'm pretty pleased with what this council has done and how the community has responded to make sure that our sales tax revenues actually, uh, exceeded last year's. We'll see what next year is.
Mr. Mayor, so I'm a little confused. You were, you were talking about this slide, and this slide tells me that, that we are two million over, one million came from some salary savings, and the other million came from more revenue than we expected.
Correct.
That's how we got to-
That's how we got the two million.
And that's where you left off, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So I was saying that the expenditure savings is mostly from, um, salaries, uh, and, um, achieved from the safety, police and fire departments. Um, we also need, uh, are going to ask for two, um, final budget, budget amendments, um, to bring those departments into compliance.
Gina, can I ask real quick question? The CARES Act funding, we got the six hundred thousand, where is that in here? Is that, have we allocated that anywhere yet?
No, we're, we're recognizing it in this current fiscal year, 2021. Um, we haven't allocated it anywhere yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this slide shows, um, the general fund revenue and expenditures. The revenue is represented in the red column and the expenditures in the blue. The first pair of columns is the approved budget. They were almost equal, at seventy-six million. And then our estimate to close, we drastically reduced the revenue, well, both, revenue and expenditures. And in the actuals, there's the two million. We had a million more in revenue and a million less in expenditures. Um, it just kind of graphically shows that, how we progressed. Um, this shows the, um, the major revenues categorized by the major categories. Um, as you can see, the sales tax is the first one, the blue line, the blue column is approved budget. The green is estimate to close, and the burgundy is actual. And you can see the most volatile is the sales tax, where we, you know, we, like, as you said, Councilmember Whelan, we reduced it way down, and then it was higher than we had anticipated. So. This slide shows, uh, the general fund department expenditures by department. Um, as you can see, um, again, the blue is approved budget, the green is estimate to close, and the burgundy is actual. And as you can see, the police department, you know, from the approved budget, we cut to estimate to close, and we cut again to actual. So. This chart represents our general fund, uh, fund balance through the last five fiscal years. Um, the blue is the approved budget, the burgundy is the actual. That green part is our business license one-time accounting change in fiscal year seventeen-eighteen. Um, we, most of the, the differences are one-time revenues or one-time departmental savings. So for the other funds, um, most of the enterprise funds finish the year with balances greater than the projected balances. This is a result of slightly higher revenues and, and expenditure savings. Um, and also the ability to not make the full projected transfers. So refuse, sewer, and water were a little over, transit and PDS were close to estimate. The internal service funds, um, the green represents estimate to close, and the pink is the actual. And as you can see, the, the largest variance there is in general government services, and that's a result of, uh, projects that were re-approached, appropriated into this current fiscal year. So the budget items, um, we need a budget regu- resolution for the city attorney, uh, department, an increase due to unanticipated legal expenses, and for the city clerk department, um, for, um, unanticipated employee benefit costs. We also, um, are asking for a transfer from the successor agency to the general fund for a portion of the PG&E refund on the Dry Creek Industrial Park project, and an increase in transfers from the general government services to the fleet fund for the purchase of fire truck number forty-five. Um, the action required is approved resolution, uh, for the final nineteen-twenty budget amendments to bring the budget into compliance. That concludes my presentation. Um, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thanks, Gina. Any questions for Gina? Bob?
Oh, sorry. You know what, I, I should have just stayed quiet because you explained it very well in your presentation, um, the point I was trying to make related to the sales tax. The, um, so the way that the resolution is presented, uh, attachment A of attachment one, uh, covers all of those, um, changes that are going to be required in order to bring us back to where we need to be by the end of the fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Uh, let me ask, Lynn, do you have anything?
I do not. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you. Bob?
Gina, excellent, um, presentation. So when COVID hit and we sort of waived fees and all that, enterprise funds didn't take a hit at all? With regards to potentially, they didn't have to pay water, we didn't do shut-offs or any late fees? It, it didn't, it, it still came in as projected or greater than projected?
Yes, to date.
Yeah. So did people not take advantage of it, or people not in, I guess, in a situation to take advantage of it? Is it, or I, I, it just, it seems interesting to me that it made it seem like people were very, were suffering a lot, yet we offer these, and people were still able. I, I, I'm, I'm glad people are responsible. That, that's, but for those who are, were not capable, they, they did not. So it could be, one, we didn't advertise it well enough, so people didn't know because they were afraid we were going to come shut off the water no matter what, or they were just very good stewards and-
Well, it, it really only affected the last quarter, you know, April, May, and June. And, and we, we did have some citizens that weren't able to make their payment.
Yeah.
Um, and-
So I guess the, the hit was very minimal, not significant to-
Right, for that fiscal year, yes.
With regards to, um, what we're seeing here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct.
And... No, it, it's just encouraging to see what you reported and sort of five months ago when we got the projections here, so.
Thank you, Bob. Do you have any?
You know, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on, on that, uh, attachment A of attachment one. When I go up to the sec, uh, top page and it says summary of expenditures by department, two thousand and nineteen through twenty, and it has the department city clerk being one thousand, city attorney twenty-five thousand, there's a total there of two-hundred-and-five-thousand-one-hundred, and, um, I'm of the opinion that total is incorrect. Uh, can I show you what I'm referencing because it appears as though we might have a clerical error?
No, you're correct. It should be twenty-six thousand.
Okay, so, um, I just want to make sure that when the motion is made that we've made that adjustment. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I'll open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Any member of the public in council chambers? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
None.
We get any correspondence, Mr. Clerk?
We did not.
Okay, we'll close public comments and come back to council for discussion or action.
Uh, you, I'm a mayor. I'm move that we approve, um, the resolution of the city council approving the final adjustments for the fiscal year. the final adjustments for the fiscal year with the correction to attachment A of attachment one, where under the first grouping of summary of expenditures by department, the total should actually be 26,000, not 205,100.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, Councilor Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilor Flores?
Aye.
Councilor Moana Tua?
Aye.
Councilor Wayland?
Aye.
Mayor Besinger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13, consider approval, 2019-2020 comprehensive annual financial report. Gina Daniels.
(laughing) Thank you. It's my pleasure to present you this CAFER for the June 30th, 2020 fiscal year. I would like to express my gratitude to the finance team who have dedicated lots of time and effort to create this CAFER. The CAFER is divided into four sections. The introductory section, which includes page eight, which is the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement Award. And this is a very important award for us to receive because it represents the highest standard of financial reporting attainable by a local government. Bond buyers and rating agencies look to this award in making decisions regarding rates, risks, and the costs associated with those decisions. The next section is the financial section, then we have the statistical section, and finally, the single audit section. There are two items to note with this CAFER. The single audit section has been omitted because the guidance on the CARES Act funding was unavailable at the time of the audit. So we had to pull it, and we will put it together later and present it to you. The next item is the pension obligations. In the past, we had shown this liability under the employee benefits fund, and we realized it was best practice to show it under each respective fund. So you will see a line that says pension liabilities, and that, under each fund, it represents the per's unfunded liability amount. The action required for this report is the recommended approval of the 2019-20 CAFER. And I believe you received CAFER books to review. And this concludes my presentation.
Thanks Gina. Any questions for Gina?
Okay, I don't have a question. I just want to point something out to you guys. And there's a lot to point out, but just one of the fascinating things that you can find out about reviewing the CAFER, if you go to page 121 of your CAFER, you will see the City of Clovis principal property taxpayers, current year and 10 years ago. So if you look at that, you're able to see, okay, well, these were some of the largest contributors to our property tax from 2011, which you see there, and then also to 2020. And the, for me, what I thought was really great from a pers, just kind of a long-term perspective, is that, you know, there was a, it gets, we get really nervous sometimes about things that happen in our community in the moment. So in 2011, the greatest contributor to our property tax was Pelco. They were the number one contributor to our property tax. And they're not there anymore in 2020, yet our property tax revenues continue to go up. Back in 2011, our number one was, well, our number one in 2020 wasn't even listed in 2011, and that's President Community Hospitals and Medical Centers. So over time, things seem to work themselves out. And some businesses come, some businesses go, some businesses continue to grow in our community and do better in our community. And so for me, it was, that's just the one page I wanted to kind of point out to you, that no matter what happens in any given moment, it's just really important for us to keep that long-term perspective, that it's not as much of a tragedy as sometimes it feels like. So thank you for letting me share.
Thanks, Bob. Any other questions?
I just always, I just always appreciate Bob's enthusiasm for this document. It's like a tradition.
Bob? So I guess the Poon Group, right, Poon Group?
The Poon Group.
So they have no issues. I mean, I read the letter, it's pretty standard. So are they commenting at all? Are they...
No, they have, they found no issues. They have no issues, yeah.
And they, I think they, aren't they here every year? Are they typically here every year? Are you always seeing, so was that a different time?
So early on, we had, we actually had the Poon Group provide the CAFER report at one, at one point.
Yeah.
They are often here, just if there's some technical questions that are asked. With the COVID spacing, with the change in the way the meeting is done, it was determined that they probably didn't need to be here in the chambers. But if council has comments for the auditors, we can certainly make them available at a future meeting.
No, it's just, it's good to hear from our auditors, just the excellent work that we do, and also get assurances from them, the auditors, to show that, you know, we always get a very clean report, something which they can certify to us up here. And so I just wanted to say that. I just used to see the young gentleman here every year.
There's no other questions for staff? I'll open this to the public. Any member of the public in chambers wish to address the counsel on this item? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
None.
Mr. Clerk?
No.
Okay, I'll close public comments and come back to the council for further discussion or action.
I move that, it's with great pleasure that I move that we approve the 2019-20 comprehensive annual financial report.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk? Councilor Ashbeck?
Never wanting to deprive Bob of that pleasure, I'll vote aye.
Councilor Flores?
Aye.
Councilor Moana Tua?
Aye.
Councilor Wayland?
Aye.
Mayor Besinger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item 14, receiving file, financial status report, first quarter 2020-21. Gina Daniels.
Okay. This is my final presentation. It's about, it's regarding the first quarter overview. I'll be discussing the revenues in the general fund, the expenditures in the general fund, other non-general funds, and the economic outlook we're currently experiencing. This first slide shows the general fund revenue adjustments that we made. The first column shows our beginning budget, and then how we dropped way down to make our COVID adjustment, and arrived at our final budget. So we reduced general fund revenues by 7.7 millions dollars. This shows the, the general fund first quarter revenue comparisons. The blue represents the sales tax, burgundy, TOT, and then the gold, the card room permits. So here's our, the first column is the pre-COVID budget, and then we adjusted it way down, and then our actual. And that green represents prior year sales tax that we received this last quarter. And what it was, it was $950 from fiscal year 1920 that we hadn't anticipated receiving.
$950,000.
$950,000, yes, thank you. And it's a result, it is resulting from, the state has a new reporting system that they implemented back in the end of 2019, 2018, and we're still feeling the repercussions of that new system. So that was a very pleasant surprise for The general fund expenditures, all departments are at expected levels based on the approved budget. We did make cuts during the, during our budget preparation due to COVID-19. We had vacant positions, and those, we froze those positions, 12 in public safety and five in the general fund, other general fund positions. And that resulted in a $2.6 million savings. And then in services, materials, and supplies, we cut that expenditure line item, almost a million dollars, 0.8 million. And finally, we balanced the budget anticipating the use of 2 million in emergency reserve money. So the other funds for the first quarter, non-general fund revenues, the departments are on track to meet budget estimates, and non-general fund expenditures, the expenditures are with current, are within current budgetary limits. So they're doing well. So the economic outlook. This slide shows the unemployment rates as of October 2020. The blue lines represent changes in non-farm payrolls for each of the recessions that are labeled there. The red line is this current COVID situation. You can see how it plummeted, and then it's going back up slowly. If you look, the national unemployment rate is 6.6% as of October. California was even higher, 9%. Fresno County, 9.3%. And the City of Clovis is equal to the national data of 6.6%. So we're doing better than California and Fresno County. This slide, kind of an unusual slide, but it shows the impacted industries from this COVID environment. The top industries, which have the dark charcoal line on the right, those industries are doing well. You can see the top one is messengers and deliveries, couriers, you know, that they're doing very well. And the blue lines show the industries that are not doing well at all. The first one is the food works, dining, all the way down to movie theaters, because nobody's going to the movies. So it, this COVID environment has had a larger impact on low-wage employees, which typically work in those industries that are represented by the blue lines. National. This next slide is economic outlook. The gray lines are, represent recessions, and you can see, it's regarding real estate, single family, new single-family houses that have been sold, how it was up in '05 and went plummeted for the, during the Great Recession, and it's been climbing up. And look in 2020, it's going up. This COVID has not affected this single-family housing market. This slide shows the economic outlook, the U.S. gross domestic product as it's changed per quarter. And you could see how it's gone down, it went down a little bit during the Great Recession, and mostly up. And then in the beginning of 2020, it just plummeted because of COVID, and then shot straight up. And so the far, the gray line on the far right, you know, it shows what it's anticipated to be for the next quarter. So very volatile. COVID-19 has everyone on lockdown again, as you know. We believe our estimates that we made during our budget time are still relevant, and we're cautiously optimistic that we can finish this current fiscal year 2021 without having to use that $2 million of emergency reserves. So keep our fingers crossed. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. Oh, but Luke wanted to say.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, you've seen a lot of figures, and like I said, it goes back to kind of the same story, both for last quarter of the last fiscal year and the first quarter for this fiscal year. With some exceptions of one-time money, like the past due sales tax, we're coming in better than our, we'll call it a COVID budget, which was our, our reduction, but not quite as good as the pre-COVID budget, or our pre-COVID expectations. As Gina said, we, we are cautiously optimistic, too optimistic, that we'll be able to get through this without tapping into the emergency reserves. But we need to, I guess we stay cautiously optimistic, because we are, we only have data from two quarters, two financial quarters, since this pandemic began. And I don't want to be, I mean, we're reading a lot about vaccines, and that's great news, that we can get back to reopening. But if you project out the vaccine timelines, we are really about at the midpoint of this, of this pandemic. You know, it could be end of next summer or fall before things are back to normal. So we have to remain cautious, we have to approach it slowly. My priorities, as this, we are evaluating this monthly and quarterly when we get numbers, my priorities are first, to not spend the, any money out of the reserves. If council recalls, we projected the economic impact at $10 million. We were going to make up 8 million of that, about 8 million through expenditure reductions, and $2 million in emergency reserves to get us through. My first goal is to not spend that, that $2 million out of our emergency reserve. My next goal, and I think that's, I think that's achievable, I think it's very achievable. The next goal is going to be, we were going to fund streetlights out of gas tax and take some discretionary revenue out of the streetlights to try to balance our budget. And I think that was about $800,000. My next goal is to not do that, for a couple of reasons. When we do that, we lose street projects, we're basically just kind of kicking the can down the road, because that street maintenance isn't being done, and the work is still going to, they're still going to deteriorate just as fast, we're just not going to be keeping up with it. And the other thing is, is that was kind of, kind of the last bullet in the gun to implement in an economic downturn. In 2008 through 2011, we basically cannibalized our fleet fund, we greatly reduced our general government facilities fund, we had deferred a bunch of maintenance, and this, that street money, or the streetlight money, was really kind of the last ace in the hole. So I'd really like to leave it there, you know, always planning for, I've never seen things so bad, they couldn't get worse. And then, if I can do those two things, I want to start re-establishing some of the services that we cut by freezing positions. And both, many of those positions were in our police department, and I've been working with the chief. We had frozen it at 100 sworn officers when we did our COVID budget. I've already given him direction to go to 102. They were, they were in the budget, we had just kind of put a freeze on them based on the revenue. I told him to go to 102. And as we see this progress, as we, as we get more quarters worth of data, hopefully, we can add back some of those positions. Now, again, we are only two quarters into this, and it's important to recall that in the last quarter of last fiscal year, the April, May, June quarter, we had the direct stimulus checks that were given to our residents, and we had significant additional unemployment benefits. That's not, we don't know where we're going, if we're going to get that again. We also had other stimulus, you know, CARES Act money going to businesses. So we don't know how this is going to play out over the next, really six months of this fiscal year, but because of the lag in getting our data, we're only dealing with three months of this fiscal year of data. We'll have a lot better idea when we do our five-year forecast in March, because we will have received the sales tax numbers for the second quarter of this fiscal year, the October, November, December, which is a very important sales tax number. We also have to watch the property tax, because impacts to property taxes will probably lag. As rent is not paid, you, you start seeing the foreclosures coming down the road from commercial properties, or devaluation from houses. So we have to be cautious of that. But again, we think we're going to be able to get through this without tapping, tapping reserves. I think we can keep the streets funding intact, and then we'll restore services as much as we prudently can. And I have pretty much daily conversations, well, probably weekly conversations with the chief, where he's at, you know, what does he have lines on people? We've got some people in the academy. And that's one of our priorities. When we come back in March with our five-year forecast, again, we'll have a much better idea on the long-term impacts of this. And at that time, we will incorporate, you know, the CARES Act funding plays out into our five-year forecast, the SAFER grant that Chief Banaski obtained plays out into the five-year forecast. So at that point, we'll have a better idea where we're going to be coming out of this, hopefully. So that's our report, and we're available. So, that's our report and we're available for any questions.
Okay, so I've heard my enthusiasm a little bit. Can you go back to the-
Oh, please, oh, please don't, Bob. Please don't.
Can you go back to the slide that showed the 950,000 that we got from the state? Kind of as a surprise.
Yeah, that one there. So, our pre-COVID budget was about, looks like 6, 9, uh, for the first quarter revenue and then our post-COVID was 5. And then, if we don't count that prior year sales tax, we came in at 6, 1 or something like that.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So, that goes to your point about, I mean, it's great to get this surprise from the state of California. Are they now caught up, do you know, or do we have more surprises?
We don't know. I mean, it's hard to, to estimate.
Are they taking, do they plan on taking any money away from us?
Not that we know of, but you never know.
Right, you never know with them. Okay, I just want to take one more visual of that. Thank you, John.
And if I may, another thing that we'll be talking about, so, and, and inside, I'm pretty optimistic that, that we're going to come out of here better than we expected, but it, it seems like, you know, every step forward, you take a step back. We're going to be coming back to council early next year with the report on Fire Station 2 and, uh, that we're gonna have to rebuild a fire station we weren't planning on. So, you know, that's, it, you know, it's like, woo, we got 2 million in CARES Act and 950,000 extra in sales tax and we gotta go build a $9 million fire station. Because the, the current one is literally being propped up with shoring so that they can continue to operate out of it. So, again, this all plays into our long-term projections that we'll be coming back with and, and that's really critical because, you know, we could afford a whole bunch right now, but then if we can't afford the payments that are going to come due in a couple of years, we're in trouble. But, I, I, I'm pretty optimistic, we're pleasantly surprised, much of that has been due to, I think, two factors. You know, the big one is the, the various stimulus, the additional unemployment insurance, the direct stimulus checks, that, that played a huge role in, in how money was being spent. The other thing is that unfortunately, this pandemic has fast-forwarded our economy 10 years and it's, it's caused a shift to, in industries and shopping patterns and all of that. And a very unfortunate aspect of that is it, it further exacerbates a growing divide between those that can buy homes and those that can't. So, the, the rates are still up because a relatively smaller percentage of the, of our residents that could afford a new home were impacted by this versus waitresses and, and stuff like that. The other thing that we're very just watching, just, you know, you know, with tears in our eyes, is the small businesses in town. The restaurants, the small vent, the small businesses, the, the hairdressers, they have been impacted by this beyond description. So, you know, that's something that Andy continues to look at, you know, how we can use different stimulus money to help out businesses and such.
Any other questions for staff?
Drew, I have a question, just a quick one. The slide on the industries most, I think it was severely affected by, was it COVID? I think, yeah. I hear an echo of myself, which is annoying me and it must be annoying you to have to hear me twice, sorry.
It's one of the, it's towards the end.
Well, yeah, that's okay, Gina. My question about that was, it would be interesting to know, yeah, in the economic outlook, if, it would be interesting to know the, the economic outlook, the economic breakdown of the Clovis residents and their employment. I'm sure that exists. It would just be curious to see, because I have a funny feeling that the bulk of Clovis is probably employed in the top of this graph versus the bottom. I just, I think it would be interesting to know the employment picture of our residents, just to see if we can line up some of these things going forward and I'm sure such a thing exists. So, I would just be curious if Andy could dig that up somewhere along the way, would like to see that.
Lynn, Councilwoman, I suspect, this is Andy. So, I've been looking at that and one of the challenges for our residents is that we don't know exactly where our residents work. They could work anywhere in the metro or be telecommuting to a job that was once in the Silicon Valley. However, I do know exactly what jobs exist in Clovis and can break those down by industry to a certain degree. We pretty much mirror the national, although we slightly, the jobs actually in Clovis trend a little bit more toward the service industries than the national averages.
Mm-huh.
But, as far as where people, our residents work, that's why we have a low unemployment rate for our residents. That's the 6.2% or so, 6.3% right now. You know, that's great, a lot of high-wage earners live in Clovis and commute out to the region or elsewhere, but we do have a lot of service industry workers here in Clovis that work at Clovis businesses that have been, they live somewhere else as well.
Yeah, I heard an interesting presentation on the impact of COVID-19 on remote workers and what that will mean for the Central Valley. I will get you a copy of it. It's a pretty interesting look at, people can choose to live in a place like Clovis because they don't need to live in Livermore or Oakland, they can do their job from anywhere. And so, some of the forecasts in that work were pretty interesting. So, it might be a way that we would re-look at some of the economic development and the way we would market our neighborhoods or build our neighborhoods or construct some of that. Anyway, just, it was, it's interesting look, to Luke's point, accelerating all of that by a decade potentially. So, I'll get you a copy of that presentation.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's all.
Okay, this is a receiving file report. We'll go to council items, item 15, consider approval, a request to approve an amendment to the agreement for professional legal services as city attorney and appointing Scott Cross as city attorney effective January 1, 2021. Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, after, David Wolf has been working with Clovis in one capacity or another since 1992 and he has been the city attorney since 2009. And it, little bit of editorializing, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with David and his entire team, but I've come, I've become quite close to David. But, all things must come to an end and David has announced his retirement and this is his last meeting and he will be retiring from Lozano Smith the middle of next year, but retiring, stepping down from his position as the city's, city attorney the end of this month. So, we need to amend the contract with Lozano Smith stating or naming Scott Cross the city attorney beginning January 1. And that requires an amendment of the contract and that's my recommendation that council approve that amendment and, and we'll go from there. Fortunately, David has done a great job with the succession planning and Scott has been, Scott's been working with us as well since the early 90s and, uh, over the last year has really become more deeply ingrained in more aspects and is ready to fulfill the role. And I'm sure we're going to see the same great service from Lozano Smith that we've had for many, many years. That concludes my report.
We have any questions from staff, excuse me, question for staff? So, you done, Lynn?
Sorry. Lynn, what's Lynn supposed to say? I, I'm tired of people retiring. David, thank you for your service over the years. I think you've done a really remarkable job of sort of giving us great direction as we found our way through some of these challenges. You are leaving Scott with some sort of dicey things coming up. I'm sure that wasn't a coincidence you decided to retire right now, but we are grateful for your service. Lozano Smith has been a great partner to the city for a long, long time, so, but we might see you between now and June, so, thanks for your service.
Any other comments? Bob?
Yeah, I'm gonna miss you. I, um, I like you. Your approach to us has been, I don't know, it's, it's been relationship-driven and I think it's, you know, a difficult position sometimes that you have to take with us when, you know, the law is, is a particular way and, you know, you know how we feel about, about something and, you know, you kind of have to be the adult in the room and I'm, you've been a really great adult for us and have guided us in a way that I think has been really beneficial to the citizens of the city of Clovis and so that's why I'm, I'm gonna miss you. And I look forward to getting to know Scott better and hopefully, a lot of what you have shown us has rubbed off on him. The little bit that we've seen of him, it certainly seems like it has and we've seen some really great folks from Lozano Smith, so I'm glad that you have a firm that has partnered with us, but the individuals are what's most important to us and so, you're one of those important people.
Thank you, Bob. Jose?
Congratulations for, on your upcoming retirement. I know it's still a ways away, but hopefully we'll get him the big David Wolf, uh, street sign and all the things. It's kind of-
Wolf way.
(laughing). So, uh, because we had earlier retirement this evening and a lot of fanfare and I, you know, kind of looks, it's a little later in the, in the evening now and I think it's less fanfare and I wish it'd be just as sad and it, it really is, because you, there's only two people we get to appoint and that's our city attorney and our city manager and, and your, your work is very significant. You do, you do keep us straight, I know you kept Nathan straight for many years, because he, he always wanted to do some crazy things and you, you kept, kept him in the straight and narrow and, but I was right there with Nathan, so I can't brag. But, thank you, thank you for your counsel and keeping Clovis legal and when the council, some of us didn't want to hear a reasonable voice and yet we did, because it was reasonable and the right thing to do, so, so, we are gonna miss you and I know Scott will do a good job, I've seen him work in Parleyer and other places where those people weren't that reasonable anyway. So, thank you. Yeah, we'll see you around, you, you live here, so we'll see you in town.
Fine. You know, David, I, I was very new to government and public processes. I remember when I first got on the Planning Commission, it was the Walmart hearings in the senior center. And, um, that was intimidating (laugh) and then, um, it, it never let up. Every time there was something big, you were there. But, uh, the, the great thing about that is it gives you confidence, meaning serving, when you were right here, because, you know, we would sit and you would be right there. But, other meanings when you aren't there, not that it's not as important, it's, you kind of know you can kind of mess up a little bit, but when you're there, it's just, okay, we, we got someone to cover us, we got someone, if we say something that may be potentially, makes the city put in a bad spot, you're, you're there to help clarify it. And every time you have clarified, no questions, whether it's from the public, us, the applicant and, and that is, speaks a lot to your character, your, your reputation and the way you do things. Thank you for your patience over the years. I, you have the best poker face, because I think you probably listen to our questions sometimes and you (laugh), you go, oh my goodness, now, how do they get elected? But, at the same time, you, you, you never, you know, you just help us get through it, yeah, and you never show whether you, one way or the other and that, that is an excellent sign of, of a legal advisor and I, and I thank you for that. And, you know, I, I wish we had your ability to look young, because I think you look the same. And I'm with council for a while, or not on the council, but, you know, just serving and seeing you. You look the same as when I first got on the Planning Commission, that's over, wow, 14 years ago already and so, and that's amazing. And, um, I think you would probably, they never show the attorneys who serve with the presidents and I think they must age just as fast as the presidents, but they only show how fast the presidents age. But, maybe we've aged, but you, you haven't and so, either we've been doing a great job or you just know how to stay calm and look, look good. So, thank you for the excellent advice over the years and, you know, I think you have many more adventures to go, mountains to climb and I think Dwight's waiting for you. So, (laugh) thank you, David.
Thank you, Vaughn. You know, David, you probably don't recall the meeting, but when you were, when you were the brand-new city attorney and I was in community policing, we had a code enforcement meeting and I think it was your first code enforcement committee meeting and one of, somebody from planning was saying, well, we can't get this guy to comply. What should we do? And you said, well, let's send him another letter. And me being me, I said, well, why don't we just go out and cite him? And he went, well, you, you could do that too. And, and it was like, okay. I, I, I've always appreciated your, your poker face and your sage wisdom and keeping us between the lines even when sometimes when we want to hit one outside the lines. You know, I, I worked with you here, I've worked with you as a staff member, I worked with you in Fowler, I've worked with Lozano Smith in several of the cities that I've worked It, it's, it's difficult to see people that have been fixtures leaving. You, your, your departure will leave some shoes to fill. I know Scott's up to it, but it'll be, and it'll be a difficult transition for us, because it would be, well, I don't think David would have told us to do that, or he would have said, uh, no. But, you know, and when I was stuck back there, I went through some drawers and I found this, this, there's 711 back there, you, you have like five of these back there. So, I figured, what the heck, you might be able to use it sometime, you know, make a keychain out of it or something like that. And, and a, and a challenge coin. But, I'm just, these are going like hotcakes. So, I, I will, and I've been coughing, so I should probably just leave that up here.
Yeah, just like that.
That's right, just (laugh) um, I have a, I have a little, little tickle in my throat. So, we're, uh, we're, we're very, we're happy for you and, um, I guess we can, did we already vote on this? I don't think we did. Okay. Now, we'll open this to the public. Thank you.
Okay. Scott Raddell, Public Utilities, I just want to echo what council and the mayor have said tonight. David, you're, you're exceptional and, you know, when you go into a room with you, you gotta put your A-game on because you raise that IQ, the intelligence level to, to extreme, you know, extreme heights. It's just like, okay, I gotta be on my A-game, because I don't want to say anything stupid in front of you. But, it has been a pleasure to work with you. We're gonna have to make a rule, no more signs or, or, you know, maybe one sign every few months. I, I think people are retiring to get signs, it's two in one night, it's not a good thing. We're losing a lot of great talent here at the city, but from the Public Utilities Department, I'd like to give you this.
Both way? Both court? Wolf way? Wolf court? Way of the wolf?
I think he played a role in Wolf Manner, too.
That's right, Wolf Way. Well, thank you. Any other member of the public wish to, David, would you like to say something?
I just, uh, thank, thank you for those kind comments. I really, really appreciate it. Um, working with the city of Clovis has been the best possible job I could've ever asked for. I mean, my legal training, I've been able to use my legal training with my passion for urban planning and really to better the community. To be able to support your policies and, and see how Clovis has grown and I, I'm not, I just, I love helping the community. I, I couldn't have asked, I mean, rather than just helping one individual, I'm helping the entire community in my career and working with everybody here and I love this job. I mean, this is, this is great. I just thank you again. I really appreciate those comments.
Any other member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
No.
Any correspondence?
We do not.
Okay. I will close public comments, come back to the council for discussion or action.
I move that we approve, uh, the amendment to the agreement for the professional legal services. It's the attorney and appoint Scott Cross as the attorney, expected January 21st.
Second. Sorry.
I thought you said check.
It's a new, it's a new Robert's Rule of Order chapter. Check.
We have a, we have a motion and a check. Uh, Mr. Clerk? Councilor Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilor Flores?
Aye.
Councilor Moana Tua?
Aye.
Councilor Whelan?
Aye.
Mayor Besseger?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously, item sixteen, consider approval, Fourth Amendment to the man, City Manager Employment Agreement. Shawna Holtermann is our presenter. Shawna.
Good evening again. For your consideration tonight is the Fourth Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement. Upon approval, Mr. Serpa's annual salary shall be $248,484. In addition, Mr. Serpa will be eligible for any cost of living adjustments and other benefits made applicable to all executive management employees. As required by state law, Mr. Serpa's new salary amount is to be stated verbally in open session. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Shawna? Seeing none, Lynn?
Uh, nothing, uh, nothing to add. Uh, well-deserved, terrific city manager, no retirement. Thank you.
We're, we're at a street sign, sorry.
Yep, no more, no more.
I see no further questions from, from the council. I will open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Any member of the public in the council chambers? Seeing none, I will go, do we have anybody online?
No.
Mr. Clerk?
No.
Okay. I will close public comments, come back to the council for action.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, add the Fourth, Fourth Amendment to the City Manager Employment Agreement.
Agreed. We have a motion in a second. Mr. Clerk? Councilor Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilor Flores?
Aye.
Councilor Moana Tua?
Aye.
Councilor Whelan?
Aye.
Mayor Besseger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item seventeen, consider possible appointments to the Kings River, North Kings River Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Scott is our presenter. Scott?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so, uh, tonight we're gonna talk about the possible appointment to the North Kings Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Uh, council member Flores had brought this up at last council session, so I thought I'd give a little bit of background on, uh, what the position is and how we fill it. Uh, so what I did is I went back through the JPA signed in 2016 and some other documents and I, I tried to put a little thing together that kinda gives a, a brief history and a full report of, of where we're going here. So, the JPA signatures, the actual members to the JPA are Fresno Irrigation District, County of Fresno, City of Fresno, City of Clovis, City of Kerman, Biola CSD Community Service District, Garfield Water District and International Water District. The contracting entities, they're, uh, which is not a signatory to it, but they're Bakeman Water Company. And then we have a bunch of, uh, interested parties. So, each of these, um, signatory agencies, uh, contributes a percentage, so, uh, of, of, of the revenue that we use to operate. Generally, we, it, it's about three-quarters of, of a million to a million dollars to operate annually. And then there was in the JPA, the interested parties had a voluntary contribution amount. And what I've done is thrown in a, a little, uh, uh, report of the budget for last year that shows you that the only members contributing or the only, only agencies contributing are the members, which is the original list I read off. And it's just for background to, to... Okay, so then we move on to the seven-member Board of Directors. Currently, there's, there's seven seats. Seat one is always Fresno Irrigation District. Seat two is shared between Garfield International, uh, and FID. Seat three is the position shared between Kerman, Biola, Fresno State and Bakeman Water Company. Seat four is, uh, City of Clovis. Seat five, City of Fresno. And seat six is the County of Fresno and seat seven is at-large. Um, so what happened at our North Kings GSA, um, meeting, a couple, uh, meetings ago is Kerman was actually on seat three, but vacated that seat because they had, um, went, went through her term, uh, Mayor Armstrong. Uh, seat two, you can see I've underlined, Garfield Water District currently serves in that seat. That's a two-year seat and they, and they continue to rotate through. So, what happened is at the last North Kings GSA, the Bakeman Water Company, and it's, it's a little confusing, was in seat number seven and moved to seat number three, which then opened up seat number seven. Seat number seven can only be, be filled by an at-large position appointed by the board from amongst the remaining members currently serving on the board, uh, not, the, well, they cannot be serving on the board. Uh, a board-approved contracting entity, which is Bakeman, already on the board, or one of the interested parties. So, for selection or a recommendation of a nomination for that at-large, uh, position, we'd be looking at City of Kerman, Biola CSD and International Water District as signatory members that contribute to the North Kings GSA. Bakeman's already on as, as, as the contracting entity. And then we have a list of non-signatory interested parties. Um, so if, if we were looking in discussions with other agencies, uh, that have a big stake in this game, what we, at, at a staff level would probably see is recommending that, uh, Biola or Kerman, um, continue to serve as the at-large position. I would say that Kerman has just, um, finished their serving on the board and Biola had, uh, served, I believe, two years ago. It was Rudy, Rudy Hernandez. And so, um, that would probably be, if we're gonna look at a JPA signature, if we were gonna go to a interested party, you know, we'd probably look at, um, Malaga Water District or, or Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control District, one of those. The, and the reason I say those is Kerman, Biola, FMFCD, and even Malaga to some extent have been very actively involved in the advisory committee and, and, and interactive and taking a lot of part in the North Kings GSA. And that concludes, and you can see the schedule, so they're looking for nominations on December seventeenth, vote on January, and then, uh, director would be seated in January, February.
And the technical committee hasn't done any, uh, any outreach for a candidate?
We haven't done any, any outreach. Um, I have been, been in discussion with, uh, some of the other agencies and it may come up, uh, 'cause we are gonna have the meeting, the special meeting Thursday night, it may come up that we may be directed to do some outreach, uh, but there's, there's no doubt City of Kerman and Biola are, are very interested. International, um, I've been trying to get in touch with them, have not been able to connect. Um, they have not participated at the high of a level in the committees. Um, and then, um, on the interested parties, uh, during the formation of the GSP, California State University Fresno, uh, participated a lot. Malaga Water District, um, Self-Help Enterprises.
And the Department of Flood Control, they're, they're, they're always there and they're...
They're always there and, uh, Alan Hoffman served on the advisory committee and that, Alan Hoffman's retiring, so that's gonna go to Peter Sanchez, who's been, uh, getting in touch with the, um, advisory committee. So, he's serving on the advisory committee now. But there isn't a, a board member from Flood Control serving, of course, on the GSA board.
But they contribute.
They don't contribute financially. They contribute a lot, as in they're a part of the solution. They do, they do a lot of in-kind services. Yes. And, uh, they're, they're, they're a big part of everything we've done. They were, they, they, they've put a lot of resources and staff into the advisory committee and the, the North Kings GSA itself.
And the, the reason I, I came, I wanted to come before the councils, that, that way I get direction from the council. If you had any preference or if anyone had reached out to you, um, any of the council members. And, uh, no one's reached out to me yet. And so, so by rights, it's probably gonna be Biola.
Biola is, is probably the, 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 the most likely one that would be nominated. Um, in talking with the other agencies, um, City of, uh, or FID, uh, County in Fresno, I, it, it seems like Biola's a very strong participant and they were on the board before they were rotated out.
They were rotated out and, and they've been, yeah, they've been out for a while now, so.
Yes. I think when I first was getting involved, Rudy, um, Hernandez was, was on that and he rotated out. Uh, Mayor Armstrong from Kerman came in and...
I, I just wanted, like, some consensus that, where if you, or giving you a, giving the council an opportunity, if they had, if they knew somebody that had expressed, um, a desire to serve on this, uh, Board of Directors, give me some feedback and I'd reach out to them, but, but I haven't heard of many, so.
And I, I could follow up with the other agencies before Thursday night and get a, a consensus.
Thursday night is, is the directors. It's not the technical.
No, Thursday night would be, yes, it, it, you're right, it's the, but I can follow up with them on, um...
And we'll probably take a vote that day.
Which is odd because the, uh, executive officer had presented that schedule and I thought the same thing. I mean, if you make the nomination. But there could be more discussion in the nomination because, uh, Brian Frateco at Fresno County, I think, had some ideas too on, on nominations, but we're not, we're not sure what he was intending to do.
Okay. So... All right. Jose, this is, the Thursday night meetings on my schedule. Uh, I, I have never been to one of those. Is it on my schedule by accident or do I need to be there? Should be on your schedule.
Unless you're the, uh, alternate and Jose wasn't gonna be there, uh, this was a special meeting.
I'm the alternate, actually, so I don't know why, Drew.
Yeah, I don't know either.
And that's, that's a special meeting, so that's not even the typical time they...
No, it's been changed because of, uh, Christmas, so, so it's a special meeting. You, you, it shouldn't be on your schedule. So...
And it could, it could be that, uh, the, the executive officer believes there'll be more discussion on Thursday night and that's why the vote won't take place until, until January. We have ninety days to seat the at-large, so we, we still have time to do that.
Okay. I just wanna give the council an opportunity to give me some direction if you had any. If not, then I'll just, I'll just, um, see what our discussion is and our consensus is within the, the directors. Thank you. Any other comments from council? Lynn?
No, nothing, thanks, Drew.
Okay. I'll open this to the public. Any member of the public in chambers wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll, uh, we have anybody on the web?
No.
Mr. Clerk, any correspondence?
No.
I'll close public comment. This is just a consider item. Um, we're gonna move forward. Um, workshop for the City of Clovis, City Council to conduct a workshop to discuss the impact on ongoing city operations during the COVID-19 state of emergency as declared by the federal government, State of California, County of Fresno, City of Fresno, City of Clovis, and to explore actions the city may take in response to the crisis. And eighteen, consider approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Clovis confirming an addendum to the Director of Emergency Services Order. Luke?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, the first item as part of the workshop is, uh, this past week I signed, uh, an emergency order that, uh, amends our, some of our internal leave policies. Uh, I had originally signed order of 2020-04 at the beginning of this, uh, pandemic and emergency. Um, it's been amended once before. It's being amended again, um, largely due to, uh, changes in some OSHA regulations that, that came out. Um, and the amendment, to summarize it, it's basically, um, if you have to quarantine, um, because you were exposed to an employee with COVID. If we get, if, now, we don't have a lot of that. We don't have a lot of inter-employee, uh, cases. I think we've had probably twenty employees that have had, uh, COVID total and one or two of those caught it from someone at work. I think maybe only one. So, it doesn't happen very often. But if you get exposed and have to quarantine for fourteen days, um, as part of the, the federal orders, there was eighty hours of COVID leave that was available for people to use if they got COVID or if they had to quarantine. Um, but the, the concern was that if we had someone who, through no fault of their own, you know, the guy driving the garbage truck with them happened to come down with COVID, they were exposed, um, and had to quarantine. Um, if that person had already used their COVID leave because they had COVID or because their family members had COVID, now they're having to use vacation time or something and it's really kind of a workplace exposure issue. So, just out of, um, out of a fairness issue, um, what we have said is that if we determine that you have to go home, that you're, you're able and willing to work, you're not sick, but you've been exposed at work in the workplace and you have to go home and quarantine, um, if you're not in a job that we can work remotely on, then we'll just pay you admin leave. We're not gonna make you burn your own vacation time. We're, it's basically gonna be on the city's dime since you were exposed at work. So, that's what this amendment to that order, um, states and, uh, uh, as per the, the code, we're requesting council, uh, confirmation and approval of that order.
Any questions for Luke on that? I, I do. Recently, there was law passed for firemen and for police regarding forty-eight fifty, which is kinda similar to that. Does this have to include that too where it, it presumes for workers' comp, uh, coverage, it presumes that COVID-19, uh, exposure is work-related? Do we have to cover it under our ordinance or the state law? We do not. The state law covers it already. So, because it's state law, it's covered? Yes. For our police and fire?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is just for non-police and fire?
Um, yes, although it, it would actually also apply to...
To them.
To them if...
And then that, those, that law would then apply?
It, it, it's basically, um, it...
Wouldn't it be a worker, well...
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure that the COVID, I'll get Shawna up here at the other microphone. She's our expert and, and let me tell you, she is invaluable keeping up with all these changes. Um...
It would only be workers' comp if it's COVID.
Correct. Not if you're having to quarantine for an exposure.
Okay.
Right. You'd have to be sick in, in, in order to file. It is presumptive for safety services. They do have to burn, burn their COVID leave time before workers' comp time kicks in, but they would still get their forty-eight fifty. Um, and then there is the ability for somebody who's not police and fire to apply for work... And then there is the ability for somebody who's not police and fire to apply for workers' comp if it's believed, you know, that it is work-related. And of course, that would be investigated like any other workers' comp claim.
But, but the workers' comp only kicks in if they get sick, not if they're, not if they're having to miss work because of exposure.
Exactly.
Any other questions for staff? Lynn?
Uh, I, I, this makes sense. I think every, I mean, I think it's very common practice, so I'm, I'd be prepared to make that resolution, that motion when you're ready for that.
Certainly. And let me open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address council on this item? Anyone in chambers seeing none? Anybody online?
None.
Mr. Kirk, no correspondence?
None.
Okay, I'll close public comments and Lynn?
There's a motion and a check, or a check and a motion for, to approve this resolution to the Director of Emergency Services orders.
I'll second motion. We have a second, we have a second, motion and a second. And Mr. Kirk?
Councilor Ashbeck?
Aye.
Councilor Flores?
Aye.
Councilor Monitua?
Aye.
Councilor Whelan?
Aye.
Mayor Besinger?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. City manager comments? Luke?
Before I get to those comments, let me run kind of through the rest of the slides just to kind of brief counsel on where we're at. It's, if you've been following the news, you kind of know the, how this story is playing out. Cases in California are spiking. Fresno cases are up, not at the same rate as the statewide cases, but Fresno cases are also climbing. Clovis cases, as you can see, the last month, we've had the highest cases of this whole affair, so it, it's, it's affecting us as well. Fresno County deaths are also starting to spike, up as high as we had seen or higher than we saw during the summer. Clovis deaths, now, this is the week-by-week deaths. The last three bars are just an outline and the reason being is the county did not get as data for the, basically each week during this three-week period, they just, we knew that 13 people died in, in those three weeks. They couldn't tell us which week they died in. These are people with Clovis addresses. So I just threw them in four, four and five, but we've had a higher death rate as well as would be expected with the caseload. This is the hospitalization graph showing the number of COVID hospitalizations and the red is the COVID ICU hospitalizations. Again, the hospitalizations are higher than we saw during the summer peak and as well as the ICU. County and regional status. For the county, this is, so the, the tier thing is still in place, but it's actually being overridden by the Regional State Home Order. But for the county tier, we have 23.6 adjusted new cases per 100,000 population. If you'll recall, seven, you needed, well, we needed to be below seven to get down into the red tier, so we are well into the purple tier. 11.3 positivity rate and 11.5% positive rate in the health equity quartile of the population. Region, the state is reporting 0% ICU availability for the region and the State Home Order effect remains in effect for the Central Valley region. That's, that's my report on the COVID. I'm open for any questions if you have on that.
Any questions? Bob?
Yeah, Luke, Lynn or Vong, have you guys heard much about the flu rates that, that we've been experiencing separate and apart from COVID? Because I'm thinking that's one of the reasons why we're having some of these high numbers. It's COVID on top of flu or flu on top of COVID. Do you guys have any information on the amount of cases we're having in Fresno County?
So I don't have any rate cases. I do know that my son that came over Thanksgiving, developed a fever, had him tested, came back negative, had him tested again, came back negative. And the second one had the second test run, the, the clinician that was running that test told me that she is seeing a lot of people that, you know, you go, oh, this kid's got COVID, you know, high fever, body aches, and it's turning out to be the flu, so that that is running as well. I do not have the rate numbers on that. I don't know if.
I don't even know if they keep track of them in the hospitals. Have you heard anything?
Are you asking specifically because ICU or are you actually wanting flu numbers?
Uh, I'm asking for flu numbers so that we can kind of track both. How many are COVID, how many are flu, so that.
Yeah, I think, I don't have it readily, but that is something we do keep track and we can request.
All right, I'm just curious. What about you, Lynn? Have you heard anything? I'll take that as a no. All right.
Lynn, are you there?
Can you, can you not hear me? No.
Now we can.
We can now.
Oh, I said something really profound and famous. No. Uh, that's weird. Can you hear me? Yes, yes, yes. Sorry. I was just going to say, I think the COVID numbers are different than the flu. They do track them separately, but it mostly is just the, the hospital. It's not helping the capacity problems in the hospital. Right? So that part of the, the ICU volume is not because it's all full of COVID patients, it's because it's just full of, of other kinds of patients as well. I would just add that.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, if anybody happens to hear influenza or flu, flu numbers, I'd like to know what those are as well, just compare them to last year. Thank you.
Well, that suffices your council comments?
No, are you ready for my council comments?
Go ahead.
John?
Yeah. Okay, so this is a picture of Old Town Clovis. I was doing Christmas shopping and I don't know if you guys have had an opportunity to experience that yet, but that's the horse-drawn carriage. Barbara Doda is the person who's driving it. But it's just really, you know, in all of the misery of this COVID, it's nice to know that we've still got that horse-drawn carriage out there and it brightened up my day and gave me a little bit of Christmas spirit. So I wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Lynn?
Um, a couple items. Just sorry to Joe that I couldn't make your Habitat for Humanity event at the Flores Homestead. So I just thought it was really neat and it was fun to see it on the news, so I'm glad that you were able to get there. I wanted to report out on FC TA, just the normal business. The only thing of interest I thought was the City of Fresno got some money from the Measure C New Technology Fund and they were talking about smart cities initiatives. And so my only question was making sure Clovis could engage along Shaw and Herndon because it didn't really make sense to have smart lights to 168 and then nothing, nothing east of, of that. So I think that staff is working with them, so that was the only thing I wanted to point out here. And then my third item is I just wondered if there was any appetite. I was interested in Senator Borges's, I don't know the number all of a sudden, I wrote it down, which I now can't find, but Andreas offered a piece of legislation today with Senator Caballero. And I just, I wondered if there was any appetite either just to thank him for doing something. I feel like it's the, one of the only practical solutions that anyone has offered. Mostly we've just, people have just, you know, talked about all of this and how bad it was. But anyway, I just, I really was impressed that he came up with that. It's a bipartisan, they have 25 cosponsors. So I just wondered if there was an appetite. I ran this by the mayor to, if I could raise this here tonight, but if we wanted to support Senator Borges in offering a solution to the circumstance that all of our cities find ourselves in, I would be interested in doing that.
I'm open to you. Are you interested in writing a letter on behalf of the council?
I'm interested in you writing a letter on behalf of the council.
I, I could, I could certainly do that. I just, it was your idea, so check.
I appreciate that. Another check, check.
I would be more, I'd be more than happy to do that.
I just, I think we've got a, we've got to affirm people that are finding solutions and not just arguing about it. So anyway, thanks.
Is that a yay, Vong? Vong, is that a yay? Okay, we're, we're in, Lynn?
Nice. Thank you. And I think that concludes my report. Thank you. My comments.
Includes your report for 2020?
That's it. And Merry Christmas, by the way.
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks.
Vong?
I was at the dedication. Excellent story, Jose, your family and the honor that you gave back to your parents. That was very touching and I think two very deserving veteran families will be there. So thank you to the staff for always thinking ahead and for working and making this work for families that will one day live here in Clovis. And Mayor, thank you for that proclamation because I don't, we didn't think Matthew was going to be here, so, yeah, thanks for thinking ahead and he, he has done, I guess he's the only Habitat CEO that I knew and so the person before him, I didn't know. So he's done a great job at that, so. Next, I was at, also at the Thursday testing again. I just want to keep seeing excellent. I think it gets, the word is getting out, people are coming and I think we even started early, so Chad and Andy and, and to the Public Works staff for just coordinating that each week. I think this is, is this the last week before we do it all again in January? And so, thanks for coordinating that. I, I think the CVMD test that we sort of heard about, it wasn't really CVMD, it was an organization outside. And so they called and blamed me, us, for stopping them from doing it. And I said, because they, they just thought CVMD is also Clovis and all that kind of stuff. I said, no, there's, you, to close streets, to coordinate, you got to work, you can't just tell us right away and expect us to work. And so they, they, I think they got a better understanding that we never want to turn it away, but we also want to coordinate, especially if it's Old Town and working in that area. So they, they will try, I think they're trying to finish before December, that's why. And that's why they were pushing it so hard. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to the staff, to colleagues. And I wanted to, to propose something to see, I don't know how you can help us do it. Everyone always says the people who make decisions never feel what they're doing. So I am proposing, let's redonate back or save our funds, our, our salaries, because, you know, we, we can help and do something, whether it's donate back to the meals program because, you know, 5,000 a month, that, that's something. And so we do it for three months, six months, whatever we agree on and to really help with a project, whether it's with the Salvation Army with the food drive and give it to Shawna and her work with the Salvation Army. That's my proposal. You know, I, I think we can do that, set an example, and we actually can say we give up our whole salary instead of, you know, some of the decision-makers who are hurting businesses and have not taken anything. And so the, my proposal to see if my colleagues are willing and able. It's Christmas gifts anyway. Yeah.
I, I think we, we can discuss that and then talk about it in January.
Yeah. So we want to do something and really put our, we're, you know, whatever, put our money where we're staying and be able to really help out, so.
You're talking just to council, right?
Yes, just the council.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if we had Luke's salary, no. No, I really, yeah. It's our, it's, it's the council, yeah. And so I, I would not make staff.
Jose? I want to thank, thank everybody for that great gift that the city gave to Have That for Humanity. Andy, thank you for all the work you did with the Family Trust. My family could be a little bit difficult to deal with. I said that publicly, so, and I, it's my family, you know.
You're the only one that could, Joe. You're the only one that could.
Anyway, but thank, thank you for that because I, I think that was the best use of that land and Have That for Humanity is going to make, it's going to do very well. Those two deserving families will be there and, and I think Mom, like I said there that day, two deserving families will, will, will have a place to, to grow and it's a, it's a great place to grow. I, I, I did it. I came out a pretty good kid. I think all my siblings did too, so, so it's what exposed us to Clovis and what Clovis is all about. Never had a bad day in that, that homestead. Yeah, it'll be a little different than what 1403 used to be, but, but it's still a great neighborhood. The Stanford Edition. I can never get used to that. I will never get used to the Stanford Edition. I didn't even know it was that until I got elected, so, but I, I love that name. People don't, when I tell them my fellow hoodies, they can't believe it, that's what they call it. They don't, they don't like it, actually. Huh? Bandits, no, those are my other friends. But thank you, thank you. It was, it was a great ceremony. I think it was also good that they honored the president of the organization, the Realtors Organization, who tragically passed away after, yeah, after a short battle with deadly disease. And I'm looking forward with the, working with the new CEO of, he's a fellow returning with me and told a good story and it's a true story of me and, and he, at the, at Botanical Gardens and Mighty Achy Music and me, man, a great combination. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And thank you, Jose. We'll miss you.
Just two quick things. One, I apologize to my, to the people in here who had to listen to these angry phone calls. If the bee had reported it correctly, they would have put it in context where people would have said, well, I'm a reasonable person. I'm not okay with people burning cities and police cars and taking over government buildings and beating people up, so we have the same values, but that's not how it was reported. So that's a little frustrating. And, and some of the hateful emails. But, you know, when, when you have people who send you emails and call you something, it's, that's nice. I've, I've been doing this a very long time. I can take those things. And a lighter note, last Tuesday, I got a call from one of our police officers, Josh Kirk, at, in my day job at the airport. And he told me that he had a former, when he was working narcotics, he had an informant who was a, he was a, just a dead-on great informant, did some cases for him, had an opiate problem, pills. And his mother had reached out to Josh and told her, him that he was on, he was on the verge of, of probably dying if he didn't get help. And she was able to get ahold of a rehab in Florida and they said, if he's here Friday, he'll be in. Well, the problem is he's lived an addiction lifestyle where he didn't have a valid identification to fly. And so Josh called me and said, with your airport connections, can you help me out? And I called my counterpart at TSA and laid the situation on her, got out of the way, put her and Josh together. On Thursday afternoon, Josh escorted the mother and this young man who's in his 30s to the airport, to the TSA person I put them in chart, in connection with. They were able to work it out and Thursday night, he was on a plane to Florida and hopefully recovery and hopefully on his way back. I'm sure his mother was very relieved. I, I know as a parent who's been in that situation, that's a, it's a difficult place to be in and hopefully he'll, he'll be here next Christmas. And on that note, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We're in Germit.
Bye, everybody. See you soon.
See ya. See ya.[1777.21]